So that, so please keep your video off until it's your turn to speak. If your video is on, then I'll probably turn it off because it's just, it's easier to manage that way. And we'll get the meeting started.
Okay. All right, very good. Okay, at this point then, I'd like to welcome everybody to the May meeting of the Brighton zoning board of appeals. Rick, would like to begin the meeting. Is there anything you would like to say before we call the roll?
Just that the, the meeting was advertised in the Brighton Pittsburgh Post of April 29th, 2021. I'll ask any of the members if they have any questions regarding many applications.
Okay, very good. And there being no questions, let's go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Primo?
Here.
Ms. Schwartz?
Here.
Ms. Tompkins, right? You're on mute, Andrea. You're here though. Ms. Dale?
Here.
Mr. Mites?
Here.
Ms. Watson?
Here.
Ms. Schmidt?
Here.
At the record show, all members are present.
Okay, so let me just give you an idea of how we'll run this meeting tonight. We have seven applications that we need to get through tonight. What we'll do is that we will, when your application is called, then we'll announce who is going to speak for the applicant. You will go ahead and speak. The board members may very well ask questions. Once that part of the meeting is finished, then I will ask if there's anyone in the Zoom conference that would like to speak regarding the application, they will be allowed to do so. Once that is completed, then we will close the public hearing and move on to the next application. When we're finished with all of those, then we may take a couple of minutes break if necessary. That will move forward and begin the deliberations. You're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. We do not allow any cross discussion between applicants and the board members during the deliberations. If you choose not to stay and listen to the decisions, then you can call Rick DiStefano in the building office tomorrow. Very normal business hours and he can let you know what happens related to your particular application. Okay, so we do have minutes from the March meeting. So I guess we're going to take a shot at those. Does anyone have any comments about those minutes? Judy, go ahead.
Yes, on page, um, hold on. Page seven, line eight, the first word should be S E Q R A. The same thing is true for page thirty-one, a line twenty-three. And the same thing is true for page forty-one, line twenty-one, the last word. That's it.
Okay, does anyone else have any other comments about the March minutes? Okay, if there are none, then could I have a motion, please?
Move to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay. Motion to is to approve with corrections. Mr. Primo?
Aye.
Ms. Schwartz?
Aye.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Aye.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson? Ms. Watson?
Minutes.
Minutes. John, you're not coming through, but give me a thumbs up. Ms. Watson with a yes, and Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve the minutes with correction carries.
Okay, Rick, when you're ready, then let's read the first application, please.
Application twelve A O five twenty, application Clover Parks Properties LLC contract purchaser and the Baptist Temple Incorporated owner property located at ten seventy-five Clover Street for use variance from chapter two oh three, article one A twelve for a church building to be converted into a professional and medical office use in a residential RLE district were not permitted by code. I'll describe an application plans on file. And I'll also add that application twelve A O six twenty, which was the same property owner, same applicant. That application has been withdrawn by the applicant.
Okay, very good. Okay, so who would you have speaking for twelve A O five twenty?
I will start, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jerry Goldman. I'm the attorney and agent for Clover Park Properties LLC. Who is a co-applicant for the use variance, which is before you this evening. Principal speaker in addition to me is going to be John August, who is an immediate neighbor to the south and one of the principals of Clover Park Properties. John has asked me to allow him a few minutes at the very beginning to express his thoughts and the history. And then I will get into the rudiments and details of the, of the use variance itself.
Before, I'm sorry, Mr. Goldman, this is Ken Gordon interrupting. Before we begin with your presentation, there's just a couple of announcements that I wanted to make as part of the record. First, with respect to Seeker, I wanted the record to reflect that the Brighton Town Planning Board has declared itself as lead agency. And for this action, which is an unlisted action under Seeker, the Brighton Planning Board adopted a negative declaration. And this board is bound by that negative declaration and will not be making a separate secret determination. It is bound by the negative declaration that has already been determined by the lead agency for this matter. Secondly, I did want to point out that we have two members who will not be participating in this public hearing or in deliberations regarding this public hearing. Andrea Wright and Ed Primo are both conflicted out on this matter as a result of the advocacy by the Harder Seacrest firm. And therefore they will not be part of the zoning board of appeals for purposes of the hearing or decision making. That's does not reduce in any way the number of votes that would be needed for approval of this use variance. The proponent would still need to get four members of the zoning board of appeals to approve the use variance application in order for it to be approved. It's just they will be proceeding with only five members with respect to this matter. So those are the matters, and I'm sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to get that out.
Oh, that's fine, Ken.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, Jerry, before you begin, could you and John just give us your proper address list, please, before you begin?
Sure. My business address is nineteen hundred Bauchan Lawn Place in the city of Rochester. My home address is fifty-nine Branchwood Lane in the town of Brighton. So as a Brighton resident, I'm always glad to appear before the boards in my hometown. John can provide his own address.
Sure, that'd be great.
Good evening. My name's John August and my wife Jane and I live at eleven fifty-one Clover Street. We live there. Excuse me, can you hear me, Dennis?
Yes, we're good.
Very good. We've lived here for twenty-four years and hope to stay another twenty years at least. We are directly to the south of the Baptist Temple. We share a four hundred foot property line with the Baptist Temple. My children grew up playing football and soccer on the lawns with other neighborhood children. The church unfortunately has declined in membership considerably since I moved into the area. It's a trend with many religious organizations. Normal, and that's pre-COVID attendance, was twenty to thirty attending members prior to COVID. COVID, of course, has exasperated their situation even more. The large campus is expensive to maintain and a real financial burden on the congregation. My wife and I, like many in the area, like to spend a lot of time in our backyard. A neighborhood use that is quiet during nights and weekends would be ideal. Our project converts the church to a high-end office building. We hope to offer a beautifully manicured, incredible green campus with ample parking, high-end interior amenities and finish. We truly believe this will be a great complement to a use for our neighborhood. One that will have the least impact on us and our fellow neighbors. I apologize for the delay in getting in front of this board. We had numerous changes to the plan through the process. At the outset, which was over about thirteen months ago, I tried my best to inform the neighbors of the plan and answer any questions they had. I sent out or hand-delivered hundred and forty letters to the immediate neighbors with as much detail as I had. I went door to door to the single-family homes that directly boarded the property on Council Rock, Highland Avenue and Clover Street. We advertised two public meetings to be held at the Baptist Temple. In a total of about fifty total attended the two meetings. We stayed as long as people had questions. We then held a third additional meeting for a group that expressed concern and had engaged attorneys, mostly country club apartment owners and three single-family homes across Clover Street from the church. We listened to the concerns, most regarding traffic and new parking spaces we had added along Clover Street. A month later, we reconvened the group one last time when we presented changes to the plan. These included the removal of the Clover Street parking and the removal of the ten thousand foot addition. Without the addition, forty parking spaces were eliminated, along with the related estimated forty trips on and again off the lot daily. This is a significant reduction in the traffic generated by the project. We were told at this final meeting for the first time by one of the homeowners that he would only accept, he would not accept anything other than the residential use. This was how the meeting was left. Tom Borshoff, who owns numerous rental units at country club apartments, and I continued to meet over the next two months, trying to gain agreement that he could sell to his group. Ultimately, we were unable to reach an agreement. At that point, we revised our application and resubmitted the smaller plan to the planning board. Commenced the traffic study. We decided to move forward without the addition. Should be stated that the addition fit on the site with all required parking, without any significant encroachment onto the front lawn area. The planning board had reviewed the plan with the addition and felt that it worked well. The removal of the ten thousand feet lessens the project's square footage by twenty-five percent. Any impact on the neighbor, neighborhood should also be reduced by that same twenty-five percent. As you might expect, it lessens the financial return by at least an equivalent percentage. We feel we are asking for the minimal relief we can ask for and still have a viable project. Moving the addition means that there will be no major exterior work done at the site. Only minor paving, upgraded lighting, and installation of new doors and windows. Those will be visible to the neighborhood and that will be all. All other work will be interior and no disruption to the area. Beyond any financial investment, I have two main motivations. As a direct neighbor and a neighborhood advocate. Number one, maintain this beautiful gateway into Brighton. The huge hardwood trees along Highland and Clover and the nearly two acres of continuous open space are unique and should be preserved. This pseudo pocket park has been here longer than most of us have been Brighton residents. If developed as a permitted use, which is single-family homes, it best, a remnant of the park-like area might remain intact. It would never be the same and certainly will change the character of our beautiful neighborhood. Number two, if the existing church needed to be demolished, which is absolutely necessary if it's redeveloped for its permitted use, to demolish, you first need to remove the asbestos, which is time-consuming, difficult and very expensive. Then the demo would begin. This is wrecking ball type demolition. This is a rock-solid building in much bigger effort than taking down a home. Site work would then go and then construction. We've estimated that it's approximately a two-year total construction period from start to the finish. Noisy, dusty, construction traffic. All I think would be a huge impact on the quality of life of anyone who lives near it. Baptist Temple's been longer, been here longer than most of us. Church has been a great neighbor to the community, always allowing the neighborhood to enjoy its facility. They deserve a fair return for their property that they cannot get with the permitted use. With that, they can continue their long existence as a house of worship. A major delay in finding an acceptable use would be crippling for this congregation and its nearly two-hundred-year history. I respectfully ask that you grant this use variance to the Baptist Temple. And I will now turn things back over to Jerry Goldman. Thank you very much.
Okay, John, thank you.
Thank you, John. With that introduction, we'll go into the main case for the use variance that we have. I'll give a little bit of background, embellish a little bit on what Ken Gordon had said relative to the status of the environmental review and the overall status of the development application that we're dealing with. We have been in front of the planning board and have talked to them about the site plan and about the site. The town's normal process in dealing with applications for use variances is to go before the planning board first. And that is what we had done. The planning board had opted for a coordinated review under Seeker and the zoning board did sign off on that coordinated environmental review. The planning board did absorb all the information which was brought in and issued, as Ken pointed out, a negative declaration at their last board meeting, which frankly gives us our clearance, if you will, to have the zoning board deal specifically with the use variance application this before you. Now we have done something else as well, as John pointed out. He has eliminated the addition to the building, which was slated to be on the northwest corner of the building on the Highland Avenue frontage. The net result of that, as John pointed out, was the reduction of, of parking and what we think right now is a better site plan. But in addition to that, it eliminated the variance, an area variance, which was required for this development, as Rick pointed out a little bit earlier. So number two on the agenda was taken off and that became unnecessary. All of that being the case, what we have right now is basically the use of the existing building and the reconfigured parking and a little bit of a better parking situation. We also have a daycare, which has been occupying this particular property or part of the property for quite a while. That daycare is slated to stay at least in the short term of the property, of the use of the property, even if the variance is granted. And that's to provide some continuity for the people who have kids in the daycare. At some point in the future, that daycare would be eliminated and would be replaced by office. The request that we have is for an office use with a portion of the office use, about a quarter, eight thousand square feet, to be low-impact medical. No clinics, no urgent cares, nothing of that sort, which has a high intensity. Basically, medical office envisioning, medical offices of the type that you would see for a doctor that would have either a primary or secondary location. We're finding now that a lot of doctors are conducting a lot of telemedicine and don't even have as many trips into the site itself. Traffic was a seminal issue to be dealt with and, and taken a look at by the town. Traffic impact analysis was provided. It's also provided to the county and state. The town insisted that both the county and the state be involved. The county clearly is involved because we are at the intersection of two county roads, but the town also referred to the state to make sure there are no impacts on the East Avenue Clover Street intersection. Both the county and the state came back and said that they did not see any traffic issues with the proposal. And the town staff did not either. And the net result was that there was a finding of no significant environmental impact, which is what a negative declaration is, dealing specifically with the traffic. So with all of that background, we come to you this evening with our zoning board of appeals application. You've received a fair amount of paper from us. We had an amended letter of intent dated April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-one with a lot of additional information supporting it. We also did a supplemental letter on May fourth, which was delivered, which was delivered to you. Kind of pales in comparison to the weight of the paperwork, which has come in from the two attorneys, one who is representing, according to their letters, representing the condominiums, the country club condominiums. And the second neighbors who represent neighbors on the other side of Clover Street. So we have a lot of interplay between their two letters. They, they're sharing the same appraisal report that has been done on their behalf. And we'll be talking a little bit about that as part of our application as well. As the board knows, having dealt with use variance applications, there are four major elements that need to be dealt with as part of a use variance. The first is that the property owner cannot realize a reasonable return for permitted uses. The second standard that has to be dealt with is whether the property is unique. The third is whether the property will change the essential character of the neighborhood. And the fourth standard is whether the hardship, the economic hardship is self-created. We have provided our position relative to that in our letters and in our information. So I'm not going to go through all that again. Given the fact that you've received all this information within the last couple of weeks, our supplemental letter, and certainly the other submissions, is our understanding. And we believe that the board will likely table this application for consideration of all the documentation and what you're going to hear from the public at tonight's meeting. And we will be prepared to address some of the issues point by point that have been raised by, by the opponents. There are a couple that we are going to bring up as part of our main conversation here, mostly corrections and not get into a whole lot of argument because we know we don't do back and forth when it comes to these types of things. So as you know, the property itself is a four-point-eight acre parcel of property located the southwest corner of Clover Street and Highland Avenue. Certainly no other, certainly no other property in this area is like it. It's also has the church building, which as John pointed out, was constructed in nineteen sixty-four and I'm sure predates most, if not all, residents' involvement with this, with this corner and with their properties. So we, we took a look at it and as John pointed out, and perhaps I can, I can just expound on it a little bit. John, John's a little bit defensive relative to the use of this property being the most immediate adjacent neighbor to it. You can see his pool in the, in the picture on the far left side of the, of the picture, which is up on the screen. John, of course, is supportive of the application. In addition to that, there's a letter of support from Luke Dutton, who is the owner of the real property immediately adjacent to the Highland Avenue, Highland Avenue driveway. And there are some twenty other neighborhood letters in support of this application. So while, while you're going to hear from the attorneys and, and some of the neighbors, understand that there's not a, a single voice and a single mind relative to this. So we should consider what's going on here on the merits of what, of what has to be considered by the board. The first standard that we have to consider is whether the current property owner can realize a reasonable return for permitted uses. And I also need to point out at this, at this stage, that the Harder Seacrest letter does cite to the town code standard, which was written in nineteen ninety-two, I believe. And the state law was amended to provide that. You don't have to have a proof of no return to the applicant or deprivation of any return to the applicant. But the question is whether the applicant can realize a reasonable return. From a legal point of view, the state law does control. There's case law that says that local municipalities cannot alter the state law. So we have to review under the state law standard. Under our argument for reasonable return, we took into account a number of, a number of factors with regard to it. We started out with an appraised value of the property. The appraised value of the property was determined by the Bruckner Tillot Firm, which is well-known and well-respected in our community and came out at an appraised value of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. An earlier appraisal, I believe, was done on behalf of the church and showed a higher value. But again, another correction is that the Boilin letter, I believe, states on a couple of occasions that the nine hundred and forty thousand dollars is our contract price or our purchase price. It is not our purchase price. Our purchase price is higher. It's different. And, and that is a show of John's commitment to this property. He's willing to pay over what the, what the market was in order to be able to, or the appraised value, in order to be able to secure this property for what he believes is a, a more benign use at the end of the day on the site. The reality of it is that you take a look at what is there already. And, and I will point out, if this were a vacant piece of land, certainly this use variance application would look a whole lot different. That is not the case. We are dealing with an existing building, which has a lot of issues that need to be rectified before it is repurposed. One of the biggest issues that would have to be dealt with, if we were to have a single-family residential development on the site, would be the demolition of the building. As John pointed out, the demolition of the building entails first asbestos abatement, then the actual demolition. There is a substantial cost, which is documented in our papers that talk about the cost to essentially bring this property to neutral, if you will, to a point where a developer could develop it. But if someone were to buy this property and were to try to develop it for a single-family residential, they would need to go and to do all of that work and to spend all of that money. And it's a substantial amount of money. And as John pointed out, it is also very disruptive in terms of what would go on, on the site. Not to mention that if this were to be developed for a single-family residential use, the build-out would not be immediate. It would be over the course of years and that would be continual disruption that will be going on, on this corner for a long period of time. But we engaged initially, John engaged initially piece by piece and took a look at the site costs and development costs. And that's reflected in the papers that we had originally submitted. Knowing that our neighbors were going to be, going to be providing additional information. John also engaged arena construction, in fact, trying to interest them, in fact, into developing this property. And, and they came back with the findings that are attached to our May fourth letter. In particular, they put a little bit more meat on the bones with regard to some of the costs that are involved. But coincidentally, the numbers that they came out with turned out to be pretty close to what our numbers were. And that was to develop the site and to build houses under the current market. Would, we would have to see a purchase price in excess of one-point-three million dollars per house in order to be able to in order to be able to obtain any return uh from this property. Um that being, that being the case, uh we also engaged very early on uh Jamie Columbus, who is a broker who's done a lot of work in this immediate area in the Houston Barnard neighborhood and in um and throughout uh this part of Brighton uh to give her opinion as to whether uh residences at that level uh could sell. And uh in our materials, there is a letter from Judy, uh not Judy, her mother uh from Jamie, who uh who indicates that, in fact, uh that that price is out of market. Uh we also have provided additional information to show that there had been very few houses which have sold in the million-plus range in uh in the Brighton area. It's very unusual. There's gonna be some talk about uh our hot housing market, and our market is hot, but the housing market right now is hot for houses in the mid-range. They aren't necessarily hot for uh excess prices in this type of use in this type of area. And any showing of what house values and costs and everything else from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty, you can almost throw out the window at this point, because basically what we have is a pre-co- or post-COVID uh market where supplies chain and supply chains have been disrupted, where costs have gone up, lumber costs have gone up, metal costs have gone up, literally every cost of building materials have gone up. I don't even know if we're building right now the two hundred thirty-five dollar square foot number is a valid number for us to work with on this uh on this particular site or or for any new construction of of the type that we are talking about here. So in reality, our numbers do show that it would uh it would be literally impossible to obtain a return uh for permitted uses. The uh the the marketing of the property has has been somewhat uh unique as well, and uh there's a full explanation of that in our materials. Todd Myers, who is uh from Keller Williams, had um had the listing on this, had actively worked with the church for a long time to try to get uh interest in the property. Uh what what he did do is something a little bit uh different, and that is that he had a closed bidding process for a period of time. And if you read his materials carefully, and then I'll just take an excerpt uh from what he had said, the property appeared in forty-seven thousand two hundred individual searches for properties within the market. It was viewed by nineteen hundred and forty individual buyers online. Uh there's some discussion uh that we have heard about. Uh well, residential brokers weren't necessarily in the loop, that in until the point where you're talking about residences. Uh the market that we would be talking about for single-family residences and development of this would be developers, and developers were the people who took a look at this and took a pass on, and that's literally that's literally where we were. The interest which was generated uh by Todd Myers and in his efforts were some churches. Uh one was a mega church, which proceeded probably further than anybody else. And and that one, uh and that one would have required a much larger parking lot, would have required uh a loss of green space, drainage issues and and everything else. It would have been a far more intense use than what we are talking about here. Uh smaller churches took a look at it, took a pass on it because of the expense and and overhead involved uh with regard to it. There were some long-term uh offers, not offers, but interest uh for retail commercial, which of course would be more objectionable to everybody, especially John, the immediate next-door neighbor. Uh there was no interest that we were able to ascertain uh from any residential builders or residential developers on the site. But suffice it to say that within the development community, this clearly was known uh to be available. Part of uh part of the reason why um there was not a sign out front uh was fear of disruption of the existing tenants, which really were the financial lifeblood of this particular use. If they thought that the property was gonna get sold out from under them, it could have created some serious problems in the short term. And uh and therefore, the marketing was conducted uh in a way to hit the target market of people who may be interested in this uh in the site for development, but not necessarily uh putting out uh putting out a sign which could be disruptive. The ability to secure a reasonable return is is clearly impacted by the uniqueness of this property, which is the second standard. Uh for anyone to say that a four point eight acre property in central Brighton that has a thirty-one thousand two hundred square foot building on it uh is not unique as opposed to others similarly situated in the zoning district. I, you know, that that kind of, I don't even have to make that argument too strong and too long. Um there are, there are some people that may say, okay, well, the building was there, and that's then that's a church's problem. Okay, take it away. And you still have a four point eight acre uh piece of property. It is not typical, and it is unique to any within the R L A zoning district, certainly in this area. The essential character of the neighborhood is the third consideration, and our argument on uh essential character of the neighborhood is one which was actually adopted as part of the negative declaration by the planning board. One of the key features of the site is the maintenance of a large, large tree green area on the corner of Highland and Clover. Everyone in the neighborhood is familiar with it. Everyone who drives by is familiar with it. It's it's striking. It's striking that there is that kind of open area uh that is available. Uh our our intention is to maintain that green area intact to keep all the trees intact, except for those which may be diseased, but but the trees would maintain. And people have had the ability, and even in weather weekends like this past weekend, people have been out enjoying that green area. The I should point out that there is a plan uh which is part of the uh of the opponent's uh submission, which provides for a green area. I haven't measured it out, but eyeballs uh but eyeballs on it would indicate that that green area is um uh is smaller and obviously would change the character of that corner substantially more than maintaining this building and its uh and its current parking, which would be internal to the site. Should be pointed out also that uh in terms of effect uh office uses typically are uh a weekday um use primarily. Sometimes a Saturday morning type of use, rarely if ever on Sundays, and and probably not on Sundays at all. Uh whereas uh some of the specially permitted uses such as churches uh schools have off-hours activities during the week, sometimes have very, very strong peak parking demands. Uh we are very comfortable that our parking demands are never going to exceed our our capacity under uh under the town code. So we we feel very comfortable that, in essence, keeping this building here with a uh with a high-class office use with a modicum of medical will not change the character of this neighborhood. Everything around the perimeter remains the same, and we believe that in reality uh this is the best way to preserve the existing neighborhood character uh at in this area. Uh the hardship has not been self-created, and that's the fourth standard that we have to deal with. Um there's a lot of uh, there's a lot of discussion relative to, well, the church has enjoyed this property for almost sixty years now, so therefore, you know, it it really, they really shouldn't be able to claim any sort of hardship with regard to this property. I guess that argument is kind of borne out by the by the particular um appraisal which was provided, which uh the opponent's appraisal shows that the value of the property is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. I I'm kind of concerned, even even the smell test would tell me that a four point eight acre parcel property in central Brighton is worth more than two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, but the methodology that was used is something that we would be addressing in a written reply if uh if that becomes necessary, because essentially uh the number was backed into uh in order to uh in order to support the argument that single-family residential was um was the right use uh and appropriate and a use that you could have for this property. Clearly, it's self-created. We have a situation where the church is losing money. Uh it's been shown for the last three years that they're losing money despite their best efforts. Uh their abilities to sustain is not related specifically to them, but is related to a number of considerations. Uh one of which is is declining church population, but it's it's also a a product of the maintenance of uh maintenance of a of fiscal plan. It's just difficult to do. Uh the best way to stabilize this property is to consider uh use of the property for a use that we consider to be relatively uh benign and and consistent uh on the site, which we think will have minimal impact on on the neighborhood itself. Uh I already saw, I believe it was a neighbor who said, when's this gonna stop, and we have a chance to talk? So I am uh, I'm gonna cut my comment short at this point. I see John's face. I don't know, John, you want to add anything, or anyone else in our group want to add any thoughts before we uh or turn it back to the board for questions?
I'm fine, Jerry. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, ha- that having been said, I think at this point, we would like to entertain any questions that the board may have, and we will take notes and listen to uh uh to the neighbors and attorneys' comments that uh that we get on this application. So thank you.
Hey, um Jerry, this is Jeannie Dale. If you don't mind, I have a question.
Yes, Jeannie.
Um my my question has to do with the congregation um and whether they are planning to open up a new uh location somewhere. Are they moving into another church? Um are they like closing altogether? Or 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 what is, what is the plan for the the congregation as it stands today?
I think John may be in the best position to answer that because he has been in regular contact with the church. Uh John, do you wanna weigh in?
Thank you. I I I was able to unmute myself. Thank you. Uh they intend to find another location and try to grow the congregation. I've entered into an agreement that they can stay for up to six months just to come in and hold a Sunday morning uh service for their congregation, not to exceed thirty or forty people. Um I would be as flexible as I can for them to try do anything I can to accommodate their ability to find another home and start to regrow their congregation.
Thank you.
This is Judy Schwartz. My question is for for John. I'm curious, how much square foot is just a daycare center used?
They use just a little under eight thousand feet, seventy-seven hundred feet, Judy.
Okay, and how much asbestos work will have to be done on the interior when you change it, or is that not an issue?
No, it is an issue. Uh there's a substantial amount of work that'll be done. Much of it can be encapsulated in place and it o- offers no issues where we have to bring air conditioner ducts, things through the ceiling, the plaster. This was built in the sixties, has asbestos would have to be remediated. Any lines through the, through any walls would have to be remediated prior. The floor, the the church is in outstanding shape. I think even the opponent's appraisal said it was above average quality construction, and it's in fine shape, so things like asbestos floor tiling, it is not friable in place, can be covered in place uh with New York State deal with the uh D E C regulations and left in place. We will have a fair amount of remediation, though, as remodel some of the classroom wings.
Okay, and final question. In light of the fact that there will be an asbestos issue, in light of the fact that you're going to reconfigure space for offices, I did a little thinking out of the box. You can keep the building as is, and what about having condominiums? And and a gym and and a, you know, even maybe an office if somebody wanted to have a like home office but get out of their condo. Did you ever consider something like that? Which would keep it closer to a residential zoning?
It's because of the issues with the asbestos in the existing building, a residential that would take more penetrations, air conditioning, more water into it than an office would, and penetrations for bathrooms, toilets, et cetera, would probably ramp up the asbestos abatement to a decent amount. Uh condos, of course, are not allowed either, and aren't allowed under the zoning, would need relief as well, so we didn't look hard. We did take a look at, number one, having someone renovate the existing building for condominiums, and we had another survey done to tear that building down and build condominiums. We estimate that the mass without a variance is thirty-two to thirty-four units. Again, purchase price and demolish, yeah, that's all, Judy, that the, and when it comes to the single-family homes, six fam- six homes are what will fit on this without variances. Um so we we didn't go far towards the condominiums uh because it appeared that we had similar problems. The cost of buying the property abating the uh asbestos was great enough that it put the cost per unit up awfully high, where I, we can submit, we didn't really think we were gonna discuss discuss condominiums, but we've had a survey, a a pro forma done by one of the leading renovators of buildings like this um that we could provide that showed it was kind of a no-starter for them to either tear it down and put the thirty-three or four units up or to renovate that existing building with condominiums, should we have the zoning approval to do that?
So Mr. August, another question for you. Um do you know if anyone approached the existing childcare center to see if they would be interested in expanding?
I have talked to them uh for a for a while. It was kind of quiet. Their oper- their efforts to market the property and uh the daycare is their largest tenant and the most important tenant for them. I've talked to them to assure that we have no immediate plans to remove them, and whenever if that was necessary, they would have more than ample notice uh to make certain that all their people could be relocated.
Yeah, no, my my question was if they were willing to expand and their their monthly payments are, you you know, would.
At this point, at this point, due to COVID, they are not using the capacity of what they're leasing. I think they are rated for around ninety-some children. They don't have that many now. Um I've talked to the owner. She has a daycare out in Webster and thought, we talked about this location. It fits extremely well with their demographics, separates their two locations, didn't indicate to me any desire um to try to expand it. I know not in the immediate future because they're really in a little more space since COVID, and they're even able to utilize.
If I can add one other thing, Jeannie, um the daycare use itself is ancillary. Uh I don't, I'm not even sure there's a conditional use, uh conditionally permitted use in this district. As a matter of fact, I don't think it is. Schools are, so an expansion of the um of the daycare from its current square footage would likely require a use variance from the zoning board, so we're back, or essentially back in the same box.
Well, I I mean, from, I I'm just thinking that it it would be a different view, I think, if the congregation who plans to stay together and just relocate to another location, if the congregation can stay and this remains a church and the daycare expands, and I think as a as a board member, I I would, I I would be okay if they said, you know, we'd like to be able to have more children there, um being that that's been existing for for quite some time and certainly fits more in character with the 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 neighborhood. Um that that would not be a concern to me if the daycare.
We found uh through.
It would be a at least a a partial solution.
The traffic study and doing the code analysis, we we find that the daycare is pretty intensive for parking needs, even though they're only in around seventy-seven hundred feet. Normally, that would be, I think, a twenty-eight parking spots under general office. I believe that requirement for the space they're in now is an additional sixteen feet.
I I don't know. I, we would have to look at that, but I, my inclination of hand is that additional children at an existing daycare center would not have more parking needs than a medical facility.
That's the code. I, you know, I I'm, one per employee in in a shift, plus I think one for every five or six children. That's the code. I, you know, I I'm one per employee in in a shift, plus I think one for every five or six children. Uh Matt could could comment on the code. But I the church, I don't think, I believe, Jean, that the church explored every means before they determined they had to move. They've had a long relationship with the um daycare. I can follow up both with the operators of the daycare as well as the church to find out if they were ever offered the opportunity to expand.
And and other churches did, you know, if 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 this particular congregation is not interested in staying at this location, um maybe you could talk a little bit about the efforts to find a different congregation that that might be interested in this space.
It's very, one thing, uh there were.
I saw some conflicting, I saw some conflicting information in the materials between what you presented and what else we'd received surrounding marketing efforts. So I thought I thought maybe if you uh explained it briefly, that 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 would be helpful. I didn't know about specific marketing out to other uh worship um opportunities.
Excuse me, Jean, from my standpoint as the purchaser of the property, I wasn't involved in the marketing. I did get involved as I got in with the neighbors and encouraged them. Uh many of them had strong ties to single family um developers. Some are developers themselves and through the last six months, I've said publicly to that group and anyone in our public hearings that if, again, if someone can show that they can get a decent return and wants to build single family homes commensurate with that neighborhood, then I certainly have no issue.
But as part of this application, I mean, surrounding the 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 burden of proof, do do you not present in your application that all efforts have been made in order to um show the the hardship and that that it's just not possible, you know, for a satisfactory return to be um achieved? And so I I I don't really follow your statement that you wouldn't know if about the marketing efforts.
Maybe who the variance is going to Jerry and uh the marketing. I I just came on as a purchaser.
Okay, I'm sorry. Then if I should be.
When the marketing had been done by the time I had uh came onto the scene.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right, I and and I think, I'm not sure where the conflict, where the conflict is and what you're seeing. But um the August twenty eighth letter, which is our exhibit B, uh sets forth from Todd Myers. Uh what the marketing had been to religious uses are three different levels. Uh mega churches, existing small congregations and religious organizations and smaller religious organizations for both worship and and to house and educate congregants. Um the and as I stated, and hopefully it wasn't conflicting, the the mega church uh people, uh the one that showed some interest in the site it actually have made a deal and are going into the Lyric Opera uh building, which is on East Avenue in the city. I I don't know if you're familiar with it. It's a it's a very, very large building. And they're uh and they're going in there. I think it was the first Church of Christ Scientists of uh, if I'm not mistaken, but I'm not sure what the prior use was. The small congregation took a look at it and and the problem that we have is that a building of of this size is is tough to repurpose for that type of use or even for more daycare use. Uh you know, there usually is a critical mass in size that daycares go to. Um you know, I think the nine thousand square feet or seven thousand square feet, seventy seven hundred roughly, whatever John said the daycare is now, is within the range. Usually I see them between the seventy seven hundred to perhaps twelve thousand square feet or something like that. Uh you don't necessarily see the mega daycares that are that are thirty thousand square feet or twenty five thousand square feet. This this church is very, we've gotten very small right now, which is unfortunate, but that's kind of where it is.
Hi, this is Jenny Watson. Is my mic working?
Yep, you're on.
Excellent. Um my question has to do with um how the use is going to be changing from what has been there aside from the church. So I I'm aware that there were nonprofits and businesses and community organizations leasing space in the building for some time. And what is your vision for specifically what do you envision being there? And how does that compare to what's been there?
I think what we vision is uh is a professional office bill, is a professional office use. And and that is because a lot of the other small uses which are in there right now, which are populating part of it, are essentially a stopgap for the church to try to create, to create some additional cash and additional cash flow. Uh I I will tell you, from my perspective, and this is a personal perspective now. Uh being familiar with synagogues, churches and everything else, their peaks of use are far worse than anything an office use is going to have. It's first of all, off peak uh type of traffic. It's on Sundays. It's on Saturdays if there were synagogues. It's nights. It's times that would be more disruptive to neighborhoods, I think, than even these types of uses. I think when churches first uh started out, uh a lot of it was, okay, we're gonna have heavy, heavy prayer of on Sunday mornings. We're gonna have some uh some activities, but it was it was clearly focused around times that were not as disruptive uh to neighborhoods. I mean, office use, strangely enough, i- is is morphed into the type of use, which is almost friendly to neighborhoods to the extent it doesn't create uh conflicts with people enjoying their houses. But that's my perspective.
Just as a follow up, I guess I wanted to know, you know, how many how many offices, how many businesses, what's the anticipated flow of the number of people coming and going? And how does how does that compare to what's there? Because like you said, a daycare use may have a more intense people coming and going.
Right. Uh our our anticipation is it would be a a normal office use. The the town codes provide for parking ratios. We are at the town parking ratios, which we believe exceed what our need is going to be. More and more, we're finding that offices don't need that much and a lot of municipalities are actually reducing uh the amount of of parking because they realize that there is not as much traffic that goes in with offices. Uh you know, I know that I'm doing half of my work at home and half in the office, so that's that's one less car half of the time. Uh in terms of what the difference is uh between what's there now, one thing that's pretty interesting is I've gone there during the weekend during the day and there are a lot of cars in that parking lot uh during the week right now. So I I can't really estimate what the difference would be. Um you know, the the church auditorium has three hundred plus seats. Uh you know, and and to that extent, when and if there were to be a use that really were utilizing that, eh, it would probably far outstrip the the parking in the parking lot, even though it is especially permitted use. I mean, i- it's just just the reality of what it is. Offices have a tendency to be more measured in terms of what their parking use and parking demand are. Um and and I think are are more friendly.
Okay.
I don't think, Jerry, I don't, I'm I'm Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, but I interpreted your question as to how many offices, different offices?
Yeah, I was really curious about, you know.
Sorry, Jennifer. I I should probably speak to that. You know, when you're trying to fit a, fill up a big building like this, you're gonna try to reach out and find a major tenant. Uh a law firm, insurance agent, something like that, that the sanctuary state space will be spectacular. But it's big and grandeur and it really requires a large tenant. Conversely, the couple of classroom wings that are very narrow, those will probably get up, split up to smaller offices. Fifteen hundred to twenty five hundred feet. They just eat to get, because they're thin, some of these quarters are only forty feet wide from wall to wall. You can't make them too long and thin. They they really aren't attractive. So the um I would guess if we were lucky, we may end up with five tenants or seven tenants to maybe at a high of fifteen tenants. Our company just purchased a building at four forty one East Avenue, which was um a, used to belong to the Jewish Community Federation uh down by Sibley Place, and we were able to immediately find a a insurance agent to take and be our primary. It's a twenty two thousand foot building. They're moving into approximately fifteen thousand right off the bat. The back will be filled with a smaller tenant. We even talked to, as we see Grace Land Church, who who bought across the street is is occupying the Lyric Theater to come and use that for some auxiliary offices. So the main tenant, uh we know who's looking around Rochester will drive the main space. The rest will be filled in. I expect, as I went door to door and talked to a lot of people in the neighborhood who expressed interest in opening a smaller separate office for their own use near their home. Uh the the neighbors on Council Rock, which are along with me, I think the most affected. Um none of those people, they all seemed content and it told me they they endorsed the property to ask me if they could get a fence cut in the future so they could go through the fence if they should move their office there someday. I think it will find its place as a local office for a lot of local people, Brighton people to occupy and certainly will get a lead tenant in there of decent size, at least ten thousand feet, I would guess.
We didn't talk about deliveries and things of that sort and and um trash pickup and so on. And is it going to be strictly strictly office? There would be um no like cafe or anything for tenants to use, no?
We made, because we will call it a class A office building, we want to have as many amenities to kind of match the surrounding area. And it's a beautiful area for anyone to consider making that their home to work every day. Uh we expect that there will be joggers and we'll probably put a shower in there, make certain that the people have an ability to get out. Um exercise to the neighbor, come back and take a shower. We expect we'll have a um some sort of food uh cafeteria, not cafeteria, kitchen that the tenants could use, not for public. It won't be open. It will just be for the people to keep their own um things in. We have some kid cooking equipment in there from the um church and provide for themselves onsite and sit outside and eat their meals. No retail, nothing. And retail, Judy, to your point of deliveries, takes more of a constant flow of of replenishing materials than an office does. With the exception of really office supplies, that you might have a Mason truck or a Staples truck stop by. Uh I can't imagine any deliveries. As far as the dumpsters, uh we'll put a fully enclosed dumpster close to the building. You'll see we've added the screening to make sure that is, will be screened adequately. It's not screened now from from Highland Avenue. Um so don't need much dumpster for a space like that. It'll likely be um cleaned daily by one firm that will do the service for all the people, take everyone's garbage out. But I think we have a six yard dumpster there anticipated for the entire uh complex, which will probably be empty twice a week.
So then the only food then would be that brought in by the tenants?
Correct, or prepared for themselves.
Okay, more questions for John or Jerry from the board members?
Thank you for your time.
Okay, very good. Thank you, John. Thank thank you, Jerry. Okay, at this point, then I would like to know who might be interested in addressing the board as it relates to this application. Uh if you could, you could raise your hand, please. You might have to help me a little, Jeff, because I'm not sure I can see everything.
Yeah, I just asked Mick Wood to unmute, so he'll be first.
Okay, very good.
Can you hear me? So I'm I'm trying to start my video, but I'm getting a message that I can't start the video because the host has stopped it.
Okay, see what we can do.
There we go. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Wood, please give us your name and address and what's your purpose. Go ahead.
Yep, uh Mick Wood from the law firm Boylan Code, uh addresses uh one forty five Culver Road in Rochester. Um I, along with co counsel Jared Lusk from Nixon Peabody, represent Country Club condominium board of managers. Uh we're appearing in opposition to the application for the use variance. We have submitted a letter uh to the board yesterday that sets out uh in detail numerous reasons why the use variance should be denied. And I want to take this opportunity to just highlight a few of those reasons. Um before I get started, uh I I mentioned Jared Lusk and and he and I, along with uh Paul Silvestri from Harder Seacrest, who represents a number of the neighbors. Um out of respect for everyone, including the board's time, have discussed coordinating our comments this evening, so we try not to repeat one another. And with that in mind, uh I would ask if that, following my comments, uh John Rhine, who uh did an appraisal that we submitted with our materials, uh is here. Um whether he could address the board and then following him, Mr. Lusk and then Mr. Celeste Silvestri. Uh just in terms of sort of keeping our presentation all together and in conserving overall time.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. So we've we've heard a lot of background already about uh the the project and and just to make clear, it's it's to convert an existing church building into a commercial office building. Uh but it doesn't include just professional offices. It also includes medical offices, and that's medical offices with patient visits. So um there's, there's been a lot of talk about the professional offices, but again, those those medical offices and patient visits are an important part of the uh the project. The i- i- as the board, I I'm sure knows that property is currently in a residential district and it's it's not only in a residential district, but it's in a residential low density uh a district. Um permitted uses are only single family detached dwellings, town of Brighton municipal buildings, uh family childcare homes, meaning childcare provided in a home and subject to certain conditions, home occupation. So so occupation's right in somebody's house. The it does include, I I want to point out a number of conditional uses, and one of those conditional uses is in fact uh daycare centers. There was some discussion about that earlier, uh whether daycare centers were conditional uh conditionally permitted use in this district. And uh as I read the zoning code, they they certainly are. Uh i- in any event, um a- as the board knows, since commercial offices aren't permitted in the district, a use variance is required. And uh the the standard to obtain that use variance i- is very high. It's a strict standard and and one of the reasons for that is because a use variance essentially defeats the expectations of persons who acquired property in a residential district. Uh in reliance on the fact that they were in a residential district and all the properties were subject to those restrictions. So a use variance, uh you know, much different than an area variance, really defeats the expectations of the people that live in the area. And uh in another thing for the board to consider in addition to the specific uh requirements of the use variance, which I and uh Jared Lusk and Paul Silvestri will get into is that this project is to put a commercial use in a residential district at a time when I think it's common knowledge that residential inventory is severely limited. Uh you know, so uh uh demand significantly exceeds supply at this point, yet this project is going to convert land that's zoned as residential to a commercial use. Uh having said that, I I'll move on to the requirements for use variance. I won't go over all of them. I specifically, I'm sure the board is familiar with them, but the first one I want to talk about is the is the first uh requirement, and that is that the applicant has to demonstrate that the applicant can't realize a reasonable rate of return provided that the lack of return is substantial as demonstrated by competent physical, I'm sorry, competent financial uh evidence. One thing that is very important for the board to keep in mind is that in analyzing the reasonable rate of return, it's from the perspective of the current owner, not the developer. So there there's been a number of uh references already, I think, to um the developer purchasing the property, whether it's the purchase price or or an appraised value that they received and then doing an analysis from there uh to come ultimately to the conclusion that uh property can't be developed for single family homes. But but that's not the analysis, whether some purchaser can come in and buy the property. But that's not the analysis, whether some purchaser can come in and buy the property for a certain amount. Again, it's whether the owner can realize a return. So I'm going to address some of those issues and then later on, Jared Lusk will address some of the reasonable rate of return issues as well. And I'm also going to briefly address the uniqueness requirement and the self-created hardship requirement. So as I mentioned, it's from the owner's perspective that we have to look at this from. And the, that, the main error that that results in in terms of the redevelopment analysis that the applicant has provided is that the applicant includes the price, as I mentioned, that it is paying. That substantially, either it is paying or it's appraisal price. But in either event, that substantially increases the overall development costs when you look at it, development of single-family homes. So that is not relevant and shouldn't be included when you're looking at that analysis. And we've cited case law in our letter to the board that fully supports that point. So that alone really makes the cost of redevelopment submitted by the applicant inapplicable here. The second, the second main issue that we see with the cost of residential redevelopment that has been submitted by the applicant is that they submit a construction cost of $235 per square foot. And that was initially, there was a letter from Woodstone Builders that, although it was a little vague as to exactly what it was referring to, but was offered in support of the $235 as being a cost for construction. We went on Woodstone's website and included materials with our letter that would show that they are selling homes for $235 a square foot. So it's sort of an inescapable conclusion that if they're selling homes for what is about $235 per square foot, that that includes all the site acquisition and development costs, sales commission and profit. Yet here, what's been done is that $235 square foot amount has been added on top of the site acquisition and development costs. And the other point there is that when you look at the houses that are on the Woodstone website, or again, that we submitted, there was three of them, they're typically a little smaller than the houses that have been proposed, that are contemplated in the proposal that we've offered to the board as an example of a six-house redevelopment that could be done economically feasible here. And we've also submitted information to indicate that as the house, size of the house goes up, the per-square-footage amount goes down. So we think it's actually even, that that amount is, the 235 is even high. Lastly, the applicant has sort of arbitrarily chosen 4,000 square foot custom homes to do their analysis. And one, when you use custom home, I suppose you could make the construction cost anything you want because you can put anything you want in the, in the house and you can make it, you know, those construction costs as expensive as, as, you know, somebody might want them to be. And then when you translate it to a 4,000 square foot house, that of course is going to increase the overall construction costs. If the houses are smaller, the overall construction costs are going to, are going to go down as well. So the end result of all of that is that the applicants then claim that a house can't, here can't sell for 1.3 almost, 1.3 and a half million dollars. But, but all of the underlying material that supports that is not really applicable. So the fact that a broker may say that a house can't be sold here for 1.3 million, is it irrelevant? Because that's not the price that a house would have to be sold for here to make a single-family development be economically viable. The next point I want to touch on is the marketing efforts that were made by the Baptist Temple. And I know there's already been some discussion about exactly what that entailed. I would refer to the board, and maybe you've probably done this already, but if you read the letter from the broker pretty specifically, it, I think, is pretty clear that the property was only listed for two months, from May 12, 2019 to July 12, 2019. When I read the letter, and I think others agree, there's talk about it, them wanting to start selling the property in 2018. But for the period prior to when it was listed in May, May of 2019, they were, according to the letter, in discussions with one particular church, which apparently I guess is now the church that's bought Lyric Theater. Those fell through, then it was listed for two months. Then the offers that came in were, and there was a, there was sort of a strange process. It was sealed bids, not a lot of information put out around parameters, you know, a sales price. After that two-month listing period, they then signed a contract with that same church that they had had discussions with and were under contract for a period of time. And then that, the church canceled the contract. And it appears at that time, they went to John August. So the conclusion again is it really was only listed for two months. And that we would submit just is not sufficient to establish diligent efforts to sell the property, which are required under the case law, and particularly in case law that was submitted in the, or cited in the letter from Harder Seacrest. And that two-month listing period is actually to be contrasted with the appraisal that the applicant submitted from Bruckner Tillet, which refers to a marketing time of one year. So, you know, their own material sort of suggests it should have been a much longer time and, and a better way of marketing it. I, there was also a question about whether there was marketing specifically to potential churches. Again, I'd refer the board to the letter from the broker. He refers to there being, I think, some interest from churches, but I did not see any reference in there to specific marketing efforts to churches. And you can read the letter, I just looked at that now while the discussion was going on, but nothing jumped out to me specifically. And, you know, lastly, the church, I guess, didn't want to upset its tenants, but it didn't, and they've acknowledged, didn't even put a for sale sign out in front of the property to get interest from people that were driving by. We've got letters, I think, from two real estate brokers that live right in the area who've stated they weren't aware the property was for, for sale. With respect to the appraisal that the applicants have submitted, again, their contention is they haven't been able to sell the property, but their own appraisal indicates that they should in fact be able to sell the property as is for 940,000. Now again, that's important because it's not with a developer, whether the developer who pays 940,000 or maybe something more than that can then turn around and get a, get an adequate return. That's not the analysis at all. It's whether the Baptist Temple can get a reasonable return. They're the ones whose rights are at issue. And again, it's the applicant's appraisal. We think there are some flaws with it, particularly with respect to some of the comparables and some, at least one, the Lyric Theater being a comparable, being used as a comparable, even though it is in a district that allows for all sorts of other uses, including entertainment uses. But, but putting that aside, that appraisal values the property as of February 3, 2021, as is for 940,000. And in its own, and the documents in the appraisal, in its definition of market value states, that's the most probable price which a property should bring in a competitive and open market under all conditions requisite to a fair sale. It's dated March 11, 2021. So that's after the attempts by Baptist Temple to sell the property. So it should presumably be taking those into account in determining the appraised value. And still comes to the conclusion that that's what it should be able to sell for, provided a reasonable time is allowed for exposure in the open market. So again, that certainly, as we've stated in the letter, I mean, if they got, the Baptist Temple got a quarter of that, they would get a reasonable return for the, for the property. So we think based on the evidence that has been submitted by the applicant themselves, they not only have shown they can't get a reasonable return, but have shown the Baptist Temple can get a reasonable return. But in spite of that, we took it upon ourselves to get our own appraisal. Because one of the key elements, as we've talked about in the first element, is the applicant demonstrating they can't get a reasonable return from all permitted uses. Again, it's not that they might be able to get a higher return from some other use that they might be able to get a use variance for. It's, you've got to look at the permitted uses. And we've submitted an appraisal that indicates they can get a reasonable return from a permitted use, and that is sell the property for use as single-family residences. The, that appraisal was done by Ryan Murphy. It shows that the value today of the property as is, is $269,000 for sale to be developed as a six-slot residential subdivision, which is permitted in the town zoning ordinance. There was a drawing with the appraisal by engineer Larry Heininger, who I believe is on the call, if anybody has any questions for him. I actually had some difficulty getting into the Zoom meeting, so I don't know if he may have as well. But I believe he's here if the board has any questions about the plan. John Ryan is at the meeting as well. He'll describe the methodology of his appraisal. But as I indicated, he concludes it's worth $269,000 because essentially that's what a developer, a site developer could purchase it for. I incur the environmental and demolition costs that the applicant actually has submitted. So we've accepted those. And then other site development costs. And then based on a analysis of sales of comparable vacant lots in the area, that that, that the developer could sell that land for residential development at a profit. It's notable that the development, that six-home development that we've submitted, leaves a seventh lot at the corner empty. So it preserves that area as an open space. And overall, it has significantly more open space than exists currently on the site. And it saves all of the trees that are there, but one. So it's in compliance with zoning. It keeps the property residential. It keeps it green. In fact, it could have made the, the analysis even more beneficial to the Baptist Temple by adding a seventh house. But in the interest of being conservative in the development and keeping it the open space, we didn't do that. So then, as I said, the analysis is the return to the Baptist Temple, 269,000. Under that analysis to the Baptist Temple is, is absolutely a reasonable rate of return for them. They, they bought the property back in 1963. They developed it for their own specific use. They've used it for over 50 years for their, their uses. So any cost that they have had initially put into the building or put in over time, they have recovered from the use of their premises. And on top of that, as a religious organization, they've been exempt from property taxes, which in looking at what the taxes otherwise would be, allows them, at least in recent years, to save $80,000 annually in property taxes. So Jared Lusk later is going to address some of the other return issues, and particularly with some of the other uses that could be potentially put on the property. But again, the reasonable rate of return requirement has not been satisfied. Secondly, I want to address the second requirement, which is that the alleged hardship of the property in question is unique and does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. A key part of the uniqueness requirement is that the uniqueness has to focus on the property itself and not the owner. So a use variance can't be granted to ease the personal difficulties of the landowner. And based on that principle, there's nothing unique about the property. The churches, the church may have a declining congregation, but in the context of the case law, that's really a personal difficulty of the Baptist Temple and not related to the, the property. And in fact, there's examples of churches in the area whose congregations are growing. And with the respect to the property itself and in the building, we've also cited in our letter a number of examples of properties in the area where buildings have been torn down and new residences constructed. So there's nothing unique about that. There's numerous examples in the area where that's happened. And lastly, the uniqueness can't be the result of the owner's actions. Since Baptist Temple is the one that designed and built the building, the applicants now claim is unique. Any uniqueness is self-created. For that reason also, the board, that requirement has not been met and the board should deny the variance. So that's a good segue into my last point, which is the hardship being self-created. So first and foremost, I think the most important point here, and we've cited numerous cases in our, in our letter to the board supporting this. And I'll quote from one of those cases is that hardship is self-created for zoning purposes where the applicant for a variance acquired the property, subject to the restrictions from which it seeks relief. So I made a FOIL request to the town and I went up to the town hall. They were just made available, I think it was on Monday. The zoning map that was adopted in 1956, and there was also a zoning map adopted in 1962, but both of those show the property zoned at that time as Class A residential. So it was zoned as Class A residential when Baptist Temple acquired the property. So since Baptist Temple acquired the property, subject to the restrictions from which it seeks relief, under the case law, its hardship has been self-created. They were, they were aware of that zoning when they went into the property. They decided to build this structure, which, you know, suited their own purposes. They constructed it with asbestos in it. They constructed it maybe in a, in a, you know, particular way. But they, they knew or should have known when they, when they went in, based at least on my reading of those zoning maps and it being zoned as residential, that, that was, that a commercial use wouldn't be allowed, again, based on what the, what the zoning maps indicate. So, and, and the, it's important to note that the applicants have not claimed in their application otherwise. They, they've not come in and said that, no, when we, when we bought this property, it was, their commercial uses were, or when Baptist Temple bought the property, commercial uses were allowed and the zoning changed over time. And while we weren't a commercial use, so we're not grandfathered, when, when we bought it, we should have been, we thought we would at one point be able to use it for commercial purposes. They haven't made that claim. So on that basis alone, we think the case law establishes that it's self-created. The 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 points that have been made, or that they argue for the fact or the claim that it's not self-created is because in their application, at least, the physical characteristics of the of the building, the fact that it's on the corner of two county roads and the decreasing amount of infecility religious observance. Again, the physical characteristics of the building, I guess they already stated it, but I it's hard to see of a a use that could not, or a hardship that could not be more self-created when 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 they're the ones that built the building that they're now claiming they is causing hardship. With respect to the roads, and one of them's a town road, but they were on that corner when they purchased the property. Those those roads weren't put in afterwards. And with respect to the declining congregation, again, that goes back to a personal difficulty that Baptist Temple is having. And we cited a number of examples in our letter of churches that appear to be growing. So on all of those, for all of those reasons, we believe that and we think the evidence is clear that the hard, any hardship, and we don't think there is any, is self-created. So having said all of that, since we submitted an appraisal and we have John Ryan here, I I do want to just turn it over briefly for John Ryan to go through and explain to the board the methodology that he used in his appraisal. And he also had a little difficulty getting on Zoom and was down in another conference room in my office. So he's in my office, and I'm going to switch seats with him now.
Good evening, everybody. I'm John Ryan. I'm the president and owner of Ryan Murphy and Associates, Inc. It's a real estate appraisal and consulting firm that started in nineteen eighty four. I've been a real estate appraiser and consultant for forty forty eight years. I also am a licensed New York State real estate broker. I'm a certified general real estate appraiser certified by New York State. I'm a member of the Appraisal Institute, an MAI member and a SRA member, which is a senior residential appraiser. I've had numerous experience with subdivision appraisals in the hundreds. And I've actually had experience with economic hardship cases also over a period of thirty five or forty years. And economic hardships are very difficult to prove. And my appraisal that I submitted shows that. I was hired by Country Club Condominiums to analyze a six lot subdivision. The lots, the hypothetical that these lots would be approved and constructed of to be developed with single family homes at a later date. The lot sizes were approximately anywhere from point five one acres to point nine, point five three acres to point nine one acres. And four of the lots had access from Clover Street to the lots will have access from Highland, Highland Avenue. The bottom line is, as far as what I was able to do by a subdivision model that I've used hundreds of times is to abstract out a residual value for the Baptist Temple in the amount of two hundred sixty nine thousand dollars. Now, that's obviously less than what the assessment is of the temple, less than what the Bruckner appraisal is. However, in the economic hardship cases I have seen, if the return is positive, and in this case it is, two hundred sixty nine thousand dollars, even though it's less than, let's say the Bruckner appraisal is valid and does sell at nine hundred thirty thousand as a church, the two hundred sixty nine thousand dollars does represent a positive return. The subdivision method that I use simply takes in consideration, it kind of works backwards. It starts out with finished lots. And I, and it subtracts from that development costs and also holding costs of a subdivision. And in during a time period of a holding period would be two years. My study indicated that the absorption period for those lots, as if vacant and put, put, put to their highest and best uses, single family homes at a later date, would be over a two-year period. So so you've got two, you've got two cash flows. You've got year one and year two. You got revenue of finished lot sales in year one, revenue of finished lot sales in years two. And subtracting from that would be the development costs and holding costs for years one and two, which would result in what would be called a sales net operating income. That that would have to be discounted for the present value of a dollar. As you know, a dollar in the future is less than it is today. I'll give you an example. If someone were to give you a, let's say, a dollar ten in one year from now, the present value of that dollar ten one year from now would only be worth a dollar if if the rate of return was ten percent. So all those things went into my appraisal in getting to the residual value of two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. In order to estimate what the value of the finished lots would be, I used four comparable sales, three of which were in the town of Brighton, and one was in the town of Pittsburgh. And on pages, I don't know if the board has the appraisal in front of them, but on pages twenty eight through forty is what's called the sales comparison approach. And in that sales comparison approach, it it outlines what those finished lots would be on an individual basis each of the six lots. On page forty one, there is a chart in the in the right-hand column that shows what the lot values, finished lot values would be, along with what the size of each lot was. As an example, lot one, I had a value one hundred sixty five thousand dollars, lot two, one hundred ninety five thousand dollars. You'll notice lot two and three were point nine one acres, and they were substantially back off Clover Street for privacy, plus they were larger. So like, they warranted a price of one hundred ninety five thousand dollars each. And then going down the line, lot four was one hundred sixty nine thousand, lot five was one hundred seventy thousand, lot six was one hundred eighty five thousand dollars. For the lots, lots one through four will have access off Clover Street. And lots five and six will have access off Highland, Highland Avenue. So part of the, this part of the subdivision analysis is to start out, is to get what those finished lots would be worth if sold over a two-year period. The next step would be to outline what the expenses are, a holding cost and development cost. And on page forty six, forty five and forty six, I've outlined the basis of the expenses of the holding costs and also the development cost. On page forty five, it outlines pretty specifically where the, some of these holding costs are and some of the development costs are. As an example, a holding cost would be real estate taxes. Earlier in this report, I outlined that these finished lots would be assessed at about one hundred fifty thousand dollars based upon the tax rate per thousand. The holding cost per lot for real estate taxes would be six thousand dollars. Is another example, insurance. Insurance market estimates would be thirty five hundred dollars in year one, twenty five hundred dollars in year two. Because in year one, there's, I'm projecting, I think, four lot sales, year two, two lot sales. So in year two, holding costs are going to be less because in year one, four of the lots are going to be sold. One of the biggest expenses, obviously, are development costs. And the biggest development costs, which are located on page forty six, include demolition, regrading, and environmental. That's going to total four hundred seventy seven thousand dollars. That's by far the biggest development cost. The other development costs are in in the form of tree removal, private drive costs, et cetera, separating, separate electric. One of the reasons the development costs aren't higher is that the utilities are, the lots are going to be very close to Highland Avenue and Clover Street. And therefore, a lot of lots in the marketplace are sold to builders who will pay for these lot, the lot values I outlined as an example. I compensated in my lot values, recognizing the fact that if Mr. Smith Builders buys lot six, lot six is near Highland Drive, and it's going to be sold as is. And the builder will be, the builder of the house will be responsible for hooking up to the street utilities. So a lot of the development costs are less than a typical subdivision where you have to run a lot of sewer and other utilities into deep into a parcel. So on page fifty one is a summary basically of the whole whole subdivision model. And on page fifty one, you'll see that this is a model that is typical of subdivision methodology that I've used hundreds and hundreds of times in doing subdivision appraisals for thirty or forty years. And it's very concise and simple in a lot of respects. At the top of fifty one, you'll see there's, I, over, since this subdivision will be sold, will extend more than one year, I put in a periodic price increase on an annual basis of two percent. I also have, as a, as a consequence of selling these lots, factored in a marketing and commissions at seven percent, legal and accounting at one percent, miscellaneous at one percent, developers' profit at thirteen percent. Now, this developers' profit would only be for, only before the sites. This model is set up hypothetically that a site developer is going to put these lots on the market after development and sell them to separate home builders. So thirteen percent represents a profit only to the developer of the site. There'll be additional profit to the home builders that buy the sites at a later date. And a lot of times, the profit on vacant sites that are going to be controlled by the home builder, they they take a little less profit on the sites in order to get a bigger return on the house, house development. So farther, and the top third of the page, you'll see year one and year two. And you'll see four lot sales in year one that total sales revenue of six hundred eighty nine thousand dollars. In year two, there are two lot sales that total three hundred ninety seven thousand eight hundred dollars. In year one, there are, between holding costs and development costs, five hundred ninety two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with a net sales operating income of ninety six thousand two hundred fifty dollars. In year two, the sales revenue is three hundred ninety seven thousand eight hundred dollars. The holding costs and other expenses in year two are one hundred seventy three thousand, net sales operating income of two hundred twenty four thousand two hundred ninety two dollars. Since we we have to be concerned in any subdivision analysis, we have to be concerned of the time value of money. The example I gave you, a dollar ten, a year from now is only worth a dollar today. That that is also considered here, where I discount the ninety six thousand two hundred fifty dollars by a present worth factor of point nine two eight four, which the present worth of ninety six thousand two hundred fifty dollars today is eighty nine, only eighty nine thousand three hundred sixty six dollars. For year two, the discount is over eighty percent of the two hundred twenty four thousand two hundred ninety two dollars. And so the present value of that two hundred twenty four thousand two hundred ninety two dollars that's going to be received during year two will be discounted down to one hundred seventy nine thousand five hundred twenty six dollars. When you tabulate both of those together, the present worth is two hundred sixty nine thousand dollars. That two hundred sixty nine thousand dollars represents a residual value. That's the value to a, to assuming that you have a six lot subdivision, it's been approved for a six lot subdivision, and hypothetically, it will be developed as a six lot subdivision. The value of the property at that point is two hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars. Again, that's less than the Bruckner appraisal. However, it does represent a positive return. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, John, thank you very much. And that's a lot of detail for folks to have to go over, so.
And that's why I figured I'd cut it short.
No, thank you for the detailed information. We appreciate it. Okay, so is it Paul that's going to be speaking next here? So we got to keep ourselves rolling here, friends.
No, it's Jared Lusk. I'm going to speak briefly.
Sorry, Jared, go ahead.
I did, I did send a message to the host, Mr. Di Stefano, asking us to, asking him to put up page one ninety of two ninety three of the the online packet, which was the subdivision development. I asked him that about twenty, thirty minutes ago. And is there any way that we could put that up so the board could see the subdivision that, a plan that's contemplated and was discussed?
No, no, Jared, we don't have that available on on the screen right now. So the board members have it, they have it in their packet, and I think we can move on from there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you very much. At, at least, uh, again, all we're seeing the, uh, the, 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 the rendering of the existing church and just wanted to be able to, uh, see the rendering of the alternative, uh, design that the, that the, uh, we, we had invested in. Thank you. Um, again, I'm, I'm here to just speak briefly, uh, regarding, uh, some additional economics. And, and again, uh, with respect to, with, with the retirement of, of my, my partner, uh, Tom Greiner. I, I believe Mr. Goldman is the, the dean of the Land Use and Zoning Bar in Rochester. I'm not sure he, how happy he is about that, but he's certainly, uh, been around a long time and, and I respect him dearly. The, with his application, however, I think it's important that you take a long, hard look at it. And you're, you, you as a board have not put out, uh, application forms that require, uh, dollars and cents proof that's consistent with the state law. And I really think it's important for this board to take a, a long, hard look at, at what was submitted because I think that's what's important. That's what the applicant has provided, not what we're saying, but what they have provided. And I think when you look at, uh, the income and expense statement for the three pre- previous years that were provided, uh, by Mr. Goldman and the church, um, it indicates, uh, the total investment in the property. And the, in, in the year twenty nineteen, this is on the, uh, the middle, bottom of the first page of the income and expense statement for twenty nineteen, it says total investment. It's left blank, meaning there are, there are three lines through that. Looking at that, presumably they have, uh, they, they've either depreciated or they have no additional capital, uh, uh, cost associated with it. Again, go back to twenty eighteen, the, the, the total capital improvements were eighty-four hundred and five dollars. And in twenty seventeen, we list the capital improvement total of two hundred and sixteen thousand, five sixty. If we, the information that we know that's in the record before the board, eighty-four hundred plus, uh, two sixteen equals approximately two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of total capital investment. I think it's important to also look at those same documents and look at the, the income for the, for the, uh, for the church. In each, a- a- and I'll focus, in each year, it's approximately a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in revenue from rent from the different groups. Primarily, I'll focus on the kids' first childcare. They have about eighty-five thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and roughly, it's roughly eighty-four and eighty-five thousand dollars a year in rent that they're, that they're receiving, uh, from the property. Uh, I, I, I think it was, uh, Gene, one of the board members, uh, suggested, sorry if I have the, uh, the name wrong, uh, suggested, have you thought at all about expanding the existing, uh, childcare use? If you take out, if you look at all of their expenses associated with the building, that's again listed in their forms, the dollar and cents proof that's required for the use variance. I think you'll see that the expenses that they claim to be approximately thirty thousand dollars in the hole and the day-to-day operations of the facility. But one of the large expenses of that is, is a church, uh, uh, on page, the last page of each report is the Church Sexton, which is approximately forty thousand dollars in expense. Uh, again, if the church Sexton wasn't there, if they moved and the, the building owner, uh, were, were able to, to at least maybe, uh, at least an additional portion, not even all of it, of the additional church to, for, for daycare or another permitted use, that they would certainly, uh, appreciate more revenue. And again, uh, the, the building would, would, would make money. But again, I think that that's important to understand that even taking the data that's been provided by the, uh, by the applicant himself indicates that there is an opportunity for economic, uh, return from the property. Just as importantly, um, I think, uh, Mr., uh, Mr. Goldman and Mr. August have, a- a- and, uh, their development analysis have each taken the opportunity to tell us how little money they can make and make no economic return because they, of, of a sales price, I think, uh, in, in each of the documents that's been referred to of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Again, that is, uh, that, that's a fantastic, and, and I understand how it's difficult to, to make money with a, with a sales price of nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, but the fact is, uh, the, the property may not be worth nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. In fact, a- as, uh, Mr. Ryan indicated, it's worth two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And, you know, although, although every owner of a piece of property would love to get the highest, uh, value they can for property. Again, it's, it's important that this board consider, as the law requires, that it consider a reasonable return for each and every lawful use. Is, it is, uh, it is itself zoned as a residential zone. The value of a residential home lot is very different than a, a, a commercially zoned property that would allow, uh, 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 offices on it. And so for Mr. August to present an offer that is contingent upon him receiving a use variance for a higher use that isn't permitted, it therefore i- i- it seems, uh, preposterous to me that the board would entertain a use variance application to allow a use that, uh, for, that, that is, uh, that, that is so much higher than what is the permitted use when the, when their application materials haven't even considered, A, the expansion of the existing childcare use or an allowed use residential use that was zoned in nineteen sixty-three when they approved it. So although the church would love to get, uh, I'm sure, get nine hundred and forty thousand dollars up for the property because it's a, it's a, uh, commercial or additional church use, they're not entitled and the ZPA is ca- cannot by law grant a use variance if, uh, there is a viable other economic use that is a permitted use. So just because you want nine, to get nine hundred and forty thousand dollars for your property, doesn't mean you can get it. And just because you can't, doesn't mean that you should be entitled, uh, to a use variance. And so with that, uh, I will, uh, turn it over, uh, to Mr. Silvestri.
Good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me? Cause it doesn't look like anyone can see me.
Oh, right ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Um, my name is Paul Silvestri. I'm an attorney at Harder Seeker St. Emory. And I represent John and Erica Stanet, who live at Two Marvin Park, uh, Kristen Vandenberg, who lives at Four Marvin Park, and Doctors Jonathan Friedberg and Laura Calvi, who own a house at eleven twenty-eight Clover Street. The Stanets and the Friedbergs property are directly across from the Baptist Temple, across from Clover Street. Uh, Mrs. Vanden, Ms. Vandenberg lives next to the Stanets. So for the reasons detailed in our letter and the letter submitted by Mr. Woods, our clients oppose the proposed use variance. Uh, Mr. Goldman, at the beginning of all this, covered the criteria applicants must show to obtain a use variance. Just as a very important reminder, each and every criteria has to be met. To be respectful, for ever everyone's time, my comments are just going to be focused on the, the fact that the requested use variance will in fact alter the essential character of the neighborhood to the detriment of the neighbors, but to the advantage of the developer. Mr. Goldman earlier mentioned the seeker review made by the planning board as lead agency. And he made a statement that, um, based on the environmental impact review, a determination by that board was made that there was no significant impacts to the character of the neighborhood. I would argue first and foremost, it's important this board to understand it has its own criteria to follow. And I believe that the criteria you need to apply for a use variance, that whether or not there is going to be an alteration of the essential character of the neighborhood is a different type of criteria than what the planning board needed to decide in order to make their seeker determination, which was more of a criteria of whether or not there's a significant impact to the environment overall, which tends to track, uh, uh, focus more on traffic and that is type of impacts than the quality, if you will, and intensity of the use of the property. Nevertheless, again, this board has its own criteria and has its own obligations to make its own decisions as to whether or not impacts to the neighborhood have, are, are, are significant here and change the essential character of the neighborhood. The, um, the project is going to introduce commercial office and even more importantly, medical office uses into an older, quiet, well-established residential neighborhood, single-family homes. Keep in mind that this property is in fact zoned low-density residential when you're having your deliberations. The Stanets, they lived in their home for twenty-one years. Uh, Ms. Vandenberg has lived in her home for seventeen years. The Friedberg and Calvies have lived in their home for fourteen years. Now they recently moved from that property, but they still are owners of the house. All of them had purchased these homes with only residential use in mind. They never imagined that the, the area, the, the property across the street from them would turn into office space. In particular, medical office space, which will have a steady stream of cars in and out throughout the entire day. They also wouldn't have spent many thousands of dollars in renovating and improving their homes over these many years if they knew what was going to be happening tonight and if this should become a successful project. They are greatly concerned about what the proposed project will do to not just the character of the neighborhood, but the, and quiet enjoyment of their properties and the impact those, this project is going to have on their property values. As a New York Court of Appeals, uh, case stated called, uh, Douglasston case, which is cited in my letter, the developer here has little to lose and much to gain in this proposed change from low-density residential to commercial and medical office. While the longstanding residents lose the character of their neighborhood that they reasonably relied upon would never change in such a fashion. Uh, Mr. Goldman in the application claims the character of the neighborhood will not change simply because the look of the property will stay relatively the same. But far more than looks impact character. The actual property use, the kind of use has a very significant impact as well. Actually, Mr. Goldman even made some statements about this, about how churches can have large, uh, amounts of people, large amounts of traffic from time to time when there are services, when there are special events. Well, in fact, you know, churches, places of religion are a traditional and integral part of a neighborhood for those very reasons. They serve as gathering places for a community, gathering places for a neighborhood. They are part of the vital character of that neighborhood. Those community events, they're not detriments, they're actually pluses for the neighborhood. And, uh, and of, of course, the Baptist Temple has served that purpose for more than fifty years. This is why churches are frequently allowed uses in a neighborhood zone and the traffic generated by such uses are tolerated in such areas. Commercial office and medical office uses is far different and far more impactful to the residential neighborhood and its character, and of course, in a bad way. Medical office use in particular will have a steady stream of cars throughout the day. A single peak hour analysis in the morning and evening does not at all capture the intensity of the use and the impacts that it will have. The application lacks any information on traffic flow throughout the entire day. What happens at lunch hour when all those people in the office run out to grab a bite to eat and then start returning all around the same period of time? To get some sense of intensity of use, one can just look at Marathon's trip generation data for the proposed use. So for the proposed use, uh, i- it's going to generate thirty-eight times more traffic in the AM peak hour and twenty-one times more traffic in the PM peak hour than a six lot subdivision would. Of course, there's also going to be glare from headlights going in and out of the site. And as Mr. Goldman did reference earlier, the use is going to require some changing of the lighting scheme, which is going to create more light spillage, which is noted in the town engineers' report that was part of the planning board application, uh, and package. And I, and I got to think is also part of the record in front of the zoning board. A commercial atmosphere is going to be created for what's been an old, very pleasant, single-family residential neighborhood for, for, for eons. A neighborhood with some larger lots and some grand older homes that have been there for over a hundred years, including the historic Stone Tolan home down the street. The character of this neighborhood drew our clients to it. And it's going to be a, it's going to be detrimentally altered for years to come by placing an office building on it. Mr. Goldman made some comments before about the great disruptions that, uh, construction activity would have over a two-year period of time if this was to be made into, uh, single-family homes. Well, that two-year period of time of construction activity and impacts will pale in comparison to the forever use of an office building at this property. While there may be a potential economic upside for the applicants here, the cost of that upside is going to be borne by our clients and the other neighbors from lost property values because of this proposed change. While we're sympathetic to the Baptist Temple's desire to sell the property and mitigate their further expenses, this fact has no bearing on the appropriateness of granting a use variance. As stated in the Joyce case, again, cited at the, uh, end of my letter, uh, I'll give you a quote. "The financial situation or pecuniary hardship of a single owner does not warrant the exercise of the power," referring to the power of use variance, "thus to affect the property of other owners and the public generally." So for all the reasons that was stated tonight by counsel, Mr. Lusk, Mr. Woods, uh, the appraisal results of Mr. Ryan that you heard tonight, the applicants have failed to meet their burden of proof and this use variance should be denied. Thank you very much for your time in listening to us.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. Okay, at, at this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application? Please, uh, indicate by raising your hand if there is. Okay.
I don't see anybody.
Okay, good. All right. All right.
Wait, there's, wait, there's somebody.
Okay, hold on. All right, go ahead, Ms. Vandenberg.
Thank you. Um, I, I just wanted to add that, um,
Chris, can you, excuse me, Ms. Vandenberg, can you give us your name and address?
I was going to, yep, my name's Kristen Vandenberg. I'm at Four Marvin Park. I'm been a real estate agent in this community for, gosh, about thirty-seven years. Um, my position is that I believe that there is a, um, that the property could be very, um, popular for future, um, homeowners. We don't have any, there are really no lots or, or areas in the community right now that, uh, people can build on. The most recent subdivision that was done was on Willard Avenue, which is off Highland Avenue, closer to Highland Hospital in that area. And that's sold out in a, in a reasonable amount of time. There was talk before about price range and ability to sell houses. Um, Willard Avenue is not as desirable of a corner or of a street as this location. Um, this property is located in an area where homes are selling, you know, anywhere from three hundred to well over a million. Um, there's, uh, house sales in that area, um, that some of them are, uh, there's often very, private sales. Um, the, the, if you want to live in the Brighton School District, your only opportunity is to own an older home. And many people that come into our community from out of town are, would prefer not to have an older home, a house built in the nineteen twenties, they're always looking for something new. And obviously, there's not too many opportunities in Brighton. So I do feel that, um, there's definitely a market for those. I'm, I'm in that market every day. I look at one of the houses that sold on Willard Avenue for eight hundred and one thousand dollars. Um, you know, I think any of us who know the area know that that's a very high price tag for that area. Most of the homes in that area sell, you know, two, three, uh, actually, some of them less two and three hundred thousand. But someone was willing to invest eight hundred thousand in that area. Um, obviously on the corner of Highland and Clover, in an area where the, uh, price range and even Mr. August's house is, um, worth substantially more than the houses around the Willi- Willard Avenue house. Um, so I, um, and, and there's question about the two hundred and thirty-five dollars a square foot. I think that you could, if you did research as, um, you know, I've done, I mean, even out in, way out in Pittsburgh, Spall is building homes at two twenty-six a foot. And, you know, actually this location is, is better than many of the areas that he's building in at this point. So, um, I'm, you know, definitely believe that there is a market for residential real estate in this area. I believe if you look at the marketing that was done back in two thousand and nineteen by I believe if you look at the marketing that was done back in 2019 by Keller Williams, they really didn't speak at all about the fact that it's zoned residential. They, they were promoting a church for sale, when really it's more than a church that's for sale. It's, it's property in an R1 district and they didn't address that at all in any of their marketing materials. So I, I just felt it was important to add that.
Okay, very good. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, who, we have, let's see, a couple more people to speak.
Jared first and then.
Okay, Jared, go ahead.
I'm sorry, in, in my rush to, to, to be brief, I, I neglected to indicate a very important point. As Mr. Rhine indicated in his appraisal report, as a residential property, as on a permitted use, the property, pardon me, is valued at $269,000. I would like the board to know, and, and I'm sure Mr. Goldman is aware, this afternoon, our client presented a bona fide purchase offer to Mr. Spall, or not Mr. Spall, Mr. Stall. The trustee noted in the application, and the amount of $269,000 cash offer, willing to deposit the $269,000 with my law firm to close the property, no contingency for a use variance permitted. So again, as you listen to Mr. Rhine and what a reasonable value or reasonable return on the property, there is a bona fide offer on the table to the landowner for that exact amount in cash.
Okay, very good. All right, very good. All right, who else do we have? I think there was someone else that had a hand. Did you see it, Jeff?
Oh yeah, they took their hand down, but they want to speak again. Come, put your hand up. Somebody else?
All right, go ahead.
Hello, this is Larry Heininger. For some reason, I can't get on video, but that's fine. And I, I'm disappointed that you're not able to put up the, the rendering of the six lot sub. But what I wanted to add here is we keep hearing about six 400,000 or 4,000 square foot homes. And I did a little toggling around with our plat map today. In order to build 4,000 square feet per code, lots have to be 36,702 square feet. So if you take that required area and you put it on the Clover Street frontage, including the park, the lots would have to be 182.41 wide and 201.21 deep. The flag lots, two and three, would lose 29.38 feet of depth. It would have to make up the required area with additional width of 43 feet to 22161. In addition, the depth of the building pads on lots two and three would reduce from a depth of 75 feet to 45 feet, so they would become compromised. The northward creep of the property lines of two and three would remove 87.42 feet from the back of lot six. And that would remove 14,565 square feet from lot six. So the new area would be 15,946 square feet, which is well under the RLA requirement of 23,125. So there's basically no way you could build, have six lots sized for 4,000 square foot homes. Never having seen any kind of concept done by any engineering group, it's maybe basically a paper exercise that doesn't stand up. So I worked through a few iterations from 3,900 square down to 3,700 square foot lots. And you can build them, including the park. The three lots, which we are not proposing to do. The three on Clover Street would be 31,491 and you could build 3,700 square foot houses. Lots two and three would be the, the town minimum for a flag lot of 34,688. And you could build a house of 3885 square feet, which is actually shown on our rendering. And then lot six up at Highland on the west side there would be 36, 33,627 and allow a 3821 square foot house. So the latest in closing, the latest rendering that we did that uses the Highland Street entrance for the driveway of lot six and the northern existing entrance of the church property for lot five. Lots one and four, which is on Clover to the south, you could build 3226 square feet. On the back lots on the flag lots, which have to be 50% bigger than the minimum. Those could be 3885, same number I, I put out there a few minutes ago. Lot five would be 3227 square feet. And lot six would be 3647 square feet. So you could develop six slots with, since I live in an older Brighton home, like my grandparents, 1,350 square feet, even the smallest one at 3226 would be about two and a half times what's worked for my family for over 38 years. And that's it.
Okay, Larry, thank you very much.
Yep.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak regarding this application?
Oh, there is, yeah.
Go ahead. Who do, who do we have?
His name's Tim. I asked him to unmute.
I was, I, or.
You can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, please, go ahead.
My name is Tim Hannah. I live at 2660 Highland, number two. I'm president of the community country club, a condominium association. I had 18 years in the banking business with Citibank, Community Savings, Rush Community Savings. I've been in the residential development business since 1994. In a meeting, public meeting, we had with John, Zoom meeting. I asked John if he had any prior real estate, residential real estate development experience. And he said that he had absolutely none. And I said that what they submitted indicated to me, based on my experience, that they didn't have that type of experience. And after reviewing what they've submitted again, that, and that really hasn't changed. I would characterize it as very superficial, not a lot of detail. He had very qualified people like Jeff Smith and Jamie Columbus. But it lacked objectivity. He didn't ask Jeff Smith for his opinion. He basically told Jeff Smith, what's it cost to build a custom house, 4,000 square feet on a slab? And Jeff, obviously, is, is very familiar with Brighton. He's built seven homes on Willard Avenue. And lots that are, for the most, are substantially smaller than what the six lot layout would be. And it, it would be helpful. I mean, Larry touched on, on a lot of the details we went into in terms of the engineering and the layout. And when you look at the layout, what was, we were trying to accomplish is create a ne, a unique neighborhood based on the size of the lots, the park-like setting on the primary corner there, and the loc, the location in terms of access to the major highways, to the Strong and Highland Medical Facilities and the Brighton Schools. I believe the neighborhood where Jeff was, was on Willard Avenue, prior to his houses, is primarily a quarter million dollar neighborhood. There is a short, there is a underserved residential vacant lot market in Brighton. However, there is not, to the best of my knowledge, an underserved office market. In fact, I believe Brighton probably has a glut of vacant office space. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak regarding this application?
Please raise your hand Zoom, or you can send me a message.
Okay, do we see anyone else?
I do not see anybody.
Okay, okay, at this point, then we'll wrap this part up and close the public hearing. All right, we can move to the next application, Mr. DeStefano.
Hey, do we have our other members back? Andrea and Ed, are you guys back in?
Yeah.
Great.
All right.
All right, let's get on to the current business, application 580121. Application Best Construction of Wayne County Agent and Ellen McCauley, owner of property located at 1129 Highland Avenue. For an area variance from section 205-2 to allow an enclosed entryway, addition to extend eight feet into the existing 39.5 foot front setback, where a 60 foot front setback is required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking?
Ellen was on the call earlier, but she left and she sent us an email to, to Rick and I and a bunch of other people.
Yeah, Dennis, this is Ed Primo. I guess she got frustrated waiting.
Okay. Rick, do you want to hang on to it and see if she comes back or what do you, what do you?
We, we can, we can hang on to it for tonight and if not, we'll just table it for applicants.
Yeah, Dennis, this is Ed Primo. I was involved with this one and when I looked at the property, I don't know if that's enough.
I, I don't think so, Ed.
Okay.
No. Okay, let's, let's move along, Rick, and we'll, we'll hold it for Ms. McCauley. We can talk about it and do the deliberations.
Application 580221, application Country Club of Rochester, owner of property located at 2935 East Avenue for a temporary local use permit pursuant to section 219-4 to erect a tent and hold up to six outdoor weddings and club special events for the year 2021. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
Okay, and who do we have speaking, please?
Michael Smith, General Manager, Chief Operating Officer of the Country Club of Rochester, also Brighton resident, 245 Brook Lawn Drive.
Okay, Mike, go right ahead.
Thank you, everyone, for, for allowing us this opportunity. We were looking to get blanket coverage for the season. We have multiple events coming up this year that require tents. We have submitted, I believe, all the proper paperwork in order to do so. The largest tent size we're looking to have is a 60 by 130 on our property. As you can see there, where the tent would be located right next to the clubhouse. We, you know, we have applied for tents in the past, but are looking to do more of a blanket coverage for the year.
Okay. All right, very good. Any questions by the board members?
Yes, Schwartz, is, there seems to be an awning up more on the main building, that a straight awning?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that a permanent part of it?
There is a permanent awning that is on the club that is white and blue, or I'm sorry, green and white. The tent would be on the lower terrace area that would not be connected to the building.
Okay.
Good. Other questions?
Mike, real quick, I, in your application, it, I thought it said that the tent could be up for three days. Would that be typical or would it be up for the individual use?
It typically runs about three days. If you, if you think about, you know, the size of it, it, it takes a full day to put it up. And if you, you know, so if we, if we were to put it up on a, on a Thursday or Friday for a Saturday event, usually it's a day before, then you have the event and then it's the day to take it down. So that's why we submitted three days.
Okay, you're thinking the event is a day?
Is, all the events would be one day, correct?
Thank you.
Yep.
This is member Wright. The application requests six events in a year. How many events did you, forget 2020, obviously, which is the year that didn't happen previous to that, to that? How many events did you typically hold that would have had an outdoor tent?
Usually, it's about six to eight. We kept it at six. That's what we have, you know, and, and, you know, keep in mind too, with COVID, restrictions and mandates still in place, the, the, sometimes the need to have an outdoor tent is part of the reason why some of these weddings and even our club events have gone this route. Because we are looking to obviously provide enough spacing and social distancing and that, this provides us that relief.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, good. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, thank you, Mike. All right, is there anyone on the call that would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Application 580321, application of Robert Orlando and Sandra Kyle Orlando, owners of property located at 151 Brookside Drive for an area variance from section 205-2 to allow a sunroom addition to extend 14 feet into the existing 56 foot rear setback or 60 foot rear setback is required by code. I'll describe an application and plans on file.
All right, who do we have speaking for this?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, zoning board members. My name is Bob Orlando. I reside at 151 Brookside Drive and we are requesting a area variance for the rear of our home to construct a sunroom. The room would roughly be between 160 and 170 square feet. The windows in the sunroom will match the existing windows in our home. The siding will match the existing siding in our home. The roofing will match the existing roofing in our home. The roof lines of the sunroom will match the existing roof lines of our home. So hopefully, nothing will look out of character. Behind our home to the south, we have a small tree line on the, on the property line. And then there is a field with trees and beyond that is a field with woods. And there is roughly a home about 800 to 1,000 square feet beyond those woods. I have, I have spoken to both of our next door neighbors, one at 145 Brookside Drive, one at 161 Brookside Drive. Neither of them had any objections to what we were proposing. I have also spoken to the property behind us. It's 906 Allen's Creek. His name was Jeff Klein and he was nice enough to come over and he had no objections. And he mentioned that he was sure that would, our addition would be in keeping with the neighborhood, which it will be. The, the home next door to us at 161 Brookside Drive in January of 2000, they were issued an area variance for the rear of their property. And their current distance from the rear of the property, rear of their property to their property line is 37.9 feet. Also, there are numerous homes in the area and I, I really don't know how the zoning laws have changed in, over the years. But it seems like there are numerous homes in the area where their rear setback is less than 60 feet. One of them in particular is the home across the street, which, I hope that's better, which they have a family room on the back of their home and it's roughly 25 to 30 feet from their rear property line. We have a detached garage on our property as possibly somebody stopped over and saw, which is 25 feet from the property line. There was no other way to achieve this, this area variance that we are requesting since we could not construct a addition on our sites because of site setback. And we could not achieve a addition in the front of the house because it would be out of character. And we could not uh achieve a addition in the front of the house because it would be out of character. Uh, we are asking for the minimum amount of square footage, which is roughly a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy square feet, the way we we determined it was we have a room in our home that is roughly that size and we kind of rearranged furniture in the house and felt that that would be the minimum square footage that we needed. Now, I guess an argument could be made, well, couldn't you build it a hundred square feet or seventy-five square feet? And I mean, anything can be built, but the problem is that the price of construction does not cor- correlate to the square footage, so if we build it, if it was built a third of the of the of the square footage less, uh unfortunately, we'd probably only save ten percent on the price and it may not be physically or financially economically feasible for us to uh to do it. If if an area variance is granted, we will not change the physical neighborhood conditions. Um, the proposed sunroom is only visible from the back of our home, it is not visible from the front. Uh, I've spoken to all the neighbors surrounding us, uh nobody has seemed to have any objections. Environmentally, we will only be disturbing some soil around the house to build to put some piers in. The rainwater will basically remain the same, it'll be shed the same way, we're not gonna, the rainwater will not be shed on a neighbor's property. So hopefully the uh environmentally, we will not uh change anything. The current condition was not self-created, the these were existing conditions when we purchased the home in two thousand twelve. Uh, we we liked the neighborhood, that's why we purchased the property. And uh in fact, we even considered after a while moving because we did have a sunroom on a previous home, we enjoyed it immensely. Um, we got to utilize the spring a lot more in this in the fall a lot more and um we were hoping that if the area variance is granted, that we can do the same with our property at one fifty-one Brooks Day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Board members, questions, please? Any questions?
Yes, um, how long have you lived in the residence? I don't know if I missed that.
It'll be nine years in uh in August.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Orlando.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone in the audience that would or the audience in the Zoom conference that would like to speak? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Application five A O four twenty-one application of Chris or Brandt Architect and Courtney and Kevin for troop owners of property located eighty-five Council Rock Avenue for an area variance from section two oh five dash two to our front porch to extend thirteen point three five feet into the existing fifty-one point eight foot front setback or sixty foot front setback is required by code, I'll describe an application plans on file.
Okay.
All right. Um, so the uh the project that we have before you that we're requesting the area the area variance for um is uh for the uh the demolition and replacement of an existing.
Chris, did you just introduce yourself to the board members?
I'm sorry, so I'm Chris Brandt Project Art. I'm working with the uh the homeowners, Courtney and Kevin Co-troupe on their uh proposed front porch uh project that we're reviewing here tonight.
And just an address for the record, Chris.
Uh, for Bear Architecture, it's thirty-two Winthorpe Street, Rochester, New York, one four six zero seven.
Okay, please proceed.
Alright, so the uh project that we have before you tonight uh is in uh to uh for the the demolition and the replacement of an existing front entry porch. Um, that's uh currently approximately twelve foot eight wide by about six foot seven deep um and that current porch is in poor condition and is um in a uh a style and design that's incompatible with the house and the surrounding neighborhood. Um, and as sort of stated in the application, the front porch does not comply with the front yard setbacks. As the front yard setbacks uh per the RLA uh zoning district require sixty foot front yard setback um in the district. I'd be uh remiss to note, so the uh this uh area Council Rock Avenue predates uh the uh the 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 Brighton zoning code, which was first enacted in nineteen twenty-four. Uh, and all of the uh homes on Council Rock Avenue have a consistent setback, all of which is uh sort of encroached into the standard sixty foot uh setback. So the uh post-project we have is seeking to largely recreate the uh the front porch that had originally been on the house when it was built back in nineteen ten. Um, and this block of Council Rock Avenue between Highland Avenue and East Avenue had several similar homes that were all built concurrently by the same reality company and likely the same architects uh of which eighty-five Council Rock is one of them and a number of these houses, including fifty-five, sixty-seven, eighty and ninety-five Council Rock Avenue uh feature prominent single-story front porches that are uh part of their original character and design. And we sort of more detail uh outline that in the memo that should have been uh submitted and shown before you, showing the uh the uh the historic photographs of several of those properties, including eighty-five Council Rock. Uh documenting uh the size, form and configuration of those porches, eighty-five Council Rock notably is the only house of those those five all built between nineteen and nine nineteen eleven that has lost its original front porch. So, uh, as I said before, we generally think this is in keeping with the neighborhood character. Um, and I it's a sort of good match both to the surrounding homes, as a quick general review of the other uh similar concurrently constructed homes on Council Rock Avenue. Uh fifty-five Council Rock Avenue uh has an approximate setback to the front of its porch of about thirty feet right of way. That porch is roughly thirteen feet by eighteen feet, so thirteen feet deep by eighteen feet wide. Um, it's sixty-seven Council Rock has approximately a thirty-eight foot setback from the right of way, its porch is approximately ten feet by sixteen feet. Eighty Council Rock Avenue, which is directly across the street from eighty-five, uh its porch is roughly thirteen feet by fourteen feet. Um, and it has a thirty-six foot setback from the right of way, and then lastly, ninety-five Council Rock Avenue, our neighbor to the south. Uh, it has approximately a thirty thirty-eight foot setback from the right of way with a porch of approximately ten feet by by twenty feet, so I proposed force that we have, which is roughly twelve foot by twelve foot square, is uh sort of right in the exact same grouping as far as the overall areas, as well as the projection from the building. But it's a little bit on the lower end comparison to some of the other larger porches that are original to these other concurrently built homes. Um, so the need for this variance is not and and our and our suspicion was not self-created. As uh as I stated before, the RLA uh the RLA District Yard requirements that were enacted after these uh homes were built um cause all the houses in the block to not be in conformance with both the area and setback requirements of this district. Um, and uh in addition to this, uh the the nonhistoric current porch is in very poor condition and it's a state's replacement, which any project on the front of the building would uh require a um a area variance for uh the desire for creating a porch. I think that's it for me, happy to take questions.
Okay. All right. Okay, does that? Yes, go ahead, Andrea.
Um, just a quick question, I I think I may have misheard you, but I think you said something about there being somewhat consistent setback among all the homes on this road. That consistent setback is somewhere in the thirty-four to thirty-eight.
So, yeah, so that's that that variation is 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 doing approximate measurement to the 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 foundation wall of the porches. The main mass of the houses, they all have a very consistent setback um that is consistent with what this house is, I think I've got the uh now I'd stare at the plane a little closer, you're gonna be one second. Um, so that uh the setback to the main mass of the house right right now is fifty-one feet nine inches to the front wall of the house. That is consistent with all these homes that were built concurrently by the same builder, the the porches vary in their size and scale and we're more in the sort of medium to lower end as far as the overall area and projection compared to some of the larger porches that were built at the same time.
And many of those larger porches all built at the same time do extend as far as you're proposing extending into this setback.
Yeah, and and further.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah, other questions, please? Anything?
I would just like to add, this is Courtney and Kevin Catrute, Mr. Chairman and the board, thank you very much for considering the the variance for this. Um, just to complete the thought is that this is something that's not out of vanity, it's really out of necessity, the existing porch is in disrepair and there are safety concerns, we have two small children ages six and eight. And would love nothing more than to sit on a nice uh good porch to watch them play in the front yard, so it's our intention to be able to restore the house to its original intent of nineteen ten craftsman style to mimic the neighborhood and really maintain the integrity of the porch with this design, um and many thanks to Bear Architecture for helping us do that, so thanks for your consideration.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, at this point then we'll wrap, find if anyone else would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that, I unmute myself, uh the next two applications are the same property, so I'll read them together. Application five A O five twenty-one application of the Country Club of Rochester owner property located at twenty-nine thirty-five East Avenue for one, an area variance from section two oh seven dash ten D three. Allow for the construction of three clay tennis courts in a front yard and move the rear yard is required by code. And two, an area variance in section two oh seven dash two A to allow fencing surrounding said tennis courts to range in height from four feet to sixteen feet, move the maximum front yard fence height of three point five feet allowed by code. I'll describe an application plans on file, and application five A O six twenty-one same owner, same property at twenty-nine thirty-five East Avenue for an area variance in section two oh three dash two point one B two to allow a shed to be located in the front yard and move the rear yard is required by code, I'll describe an application plans on file.
All right, who do we have speaking on behalf of twenty-nine thirty-five East Avenue?
Uh, good evening, this is Andrew Spencer with BME Associates, uh can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and again, my name is Andrew Spencer with BME Associates, address of ten Lift Bridge Lane, Fairport, New York, one four four five zero. Uh, also a Brighton residence at one twenty-four Woodgate Terrace. Um, with this evening as well, I believe Rick Holthoff is on the line and he is the golf course superintendent at the Country Club of Rochester. Um, I would like to touch on both of the variance requests in in general together. Um, so I will be making some comments on both of the applications that are before you this evening. Uh, the Country Club of Rochester desires to put in three clay tennis courts on an area of the site that is currently the ice rink. Uh, it's a paved area which is just to the east of an existing uh paved tennis courts and directly to the west of the elevated paddle tennis court facility uh at the club. Uh, the intent of the project is to remove the existing ice rink and the existing uh wooden shed, which is a watershed for the ice rink and replace it with the three clay tennis courts. Uh, the tennis courts will be approximately eighty-three feet from northern property line. Running along the north of the access drive uh coming into the club. We are also proposing the installation of a shed, which will be placed to approximately a hundred and thirty or a hundred and eighty-five feet from the property line uh to the southwest corner of the clay tennis courts and the use of that shed is for equipment uh nets and things of that nature uh that are utilized for maintenance of the clay tennis courts. Um, so we do have an existing shed which is close to the property line, which will be removed uh and replaced with a shed that is further from the property line, there is also an existing uh tennis hut uh which is right to the west of the northern boundary of the clay tennis courts and that is to remain uh with this project. We're looking for uh variance to allow the clay tennis courts in the front yard, basically because of the arrangement of the property. Uh, the clubhouse is further to the west of this property, which is on the corner of Elmwood and and uh East Avenue. Uh, and because of that configuration, a majority of this site is front yard. Uh, but as you can see, and if you've been to the 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 club before, uh there are existing other facilities in the area with similar characteristics, the existing uh paved tennis courts and the paddle tennis courts, each of which are fenced, uh the existing tennis courts have a fence heights of approximately uh ten feet in height. And the paddle tennis courts have a fence height ranging from fifteen to seventeen feet in heights, dependent upon where you are uh on the property. We are looking to propose a sixteen-foot high fence along the southern boundary of the clay tennis courts uh to mitigate for any errant golf balls uh that could be coming in from uh the tee box of the particular hole that's just to the south. Uh, this is a landing zone uh for some people that do slice the ball. Uh, balls have been found on the ice rink uh previously and almost all the way up to the roadway in some occasions. Uh, so the sixteen feet is being requested to uh for safety of those that are playing tennis as well as um to stop ten uh golf balls from going further away from the the golf hole itself. For the public record, just do want to make uh make you aware that we did provide the letter of intent dated April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we did outline uh reasons that we believe the the variance uh should be approved. And I will just briefly touch on a few of these items, uh we do not believe that the the installation of the tennis court here and and uh granting of the variance will produce an undesirable change in the character, uh we have very similar uses in this area uh and it is consistent with uh those uses. Whether this could be achieved by some other method by the club, uh it the tennis court per the town code needs to be in a rear yard, uh the parking area for the golf course is to the west of the existing clubhouse and takes up a majority of the space in that area. Uh, to situate a uh tennis court to the west of the club in the rear yard would disassociate these other similar uses. As I said, that tennis building is to remain and that is the hub for the use of uh both the paved tennis courts and the use of the clay tennis courts. Do believe that the shed is also a requirement because it will house the rollers and the cleaners and sweepers for the clay tennis court and that needs to be in relative close proximity to this use. Now, we do not, the applicant does not believe that this variance is substantial, again, as it relates to the other existing and similar uses uh that this is going next to. It is the same exact characteristic is a tennis court and there's tennis courts uh immediately adjacent. Uh, and this is the minimum variance to request uh for location of the tennis court in the shed in the front yard. We need both of these items together, uh and as I stated previously, they're all grouped together between the paddle tennis and the the paved tennis courts. Uh, then the sixteen-foot height fence is a the minimum that is necessary due to the golf balls that are coming in from the course. Uh, and for protection of those that are playing uh playing tennis, we have a four-foot sections of fencing along the western edge and the eastern edge of the tennis court. A ten-foot high fence section being proposed along the northern boundary of the the new clay tennis courts and the sixteen-foot to the south, the ten-foot high fence on along the northern boundary is to stop any errant tennis balls from going out into that access drive. Do not believe that this will have any adverse impact on the physical characteristics of the property. Uh, as I stated, we are taking away a a paved ice rink area, we're replacing it with the clay tennis courts. There will be no adverse uh conditions uh caused by the installation of the tennis courts. Uh, there is adequate area to discharge the runoff onto the fairway of the golf course and then drain off to uh some lower portions of land to the east of this location within the property itself. And I think that that covers it, I won't belabor this much more than I I need to, so I would be uh more than happy, oh, I I the the one thing I do want to say, Mr. Chairman. And I think that that covers it. I won't belabor this much more than I, I need to, so I would be, uh, more than happy. Oh, I, I, the, the one thing I do want to say, Mr. Chairman. Uh, there were some letters and emails that were provided, uh, from the residents, uh, just to the north. That were all in support of this project. The Country Club of Rochester did work, uh, with them, reviewed the plans, made some adjustments and. They are in support of putting the clay tennis courts in this location. Uh, with that, I would answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Spencer? Pretty straightforward. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, is there anyone on the call who would like to speak regarding this application? Okay, there being none, then the public hearing is closed.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, would you like friends to forge along here or does anyone need a couple minutes?
Dennis, before we, uh, stop with the public hearings, um, I did invite Ms. McCauley to rejoin our meeting if she wanted to have her matter heard. Can we just have Jeff check to see if she's rejoined?
Uh, I do not see her on.
And no one is in the waiting room?
No, there's no waiting room.
Might I propose taking a five minute stretch break and.
Okay, let's.
The hearing open for the five minutes to give her five more minutes?
Okay, that's fine, but let's keep it to the five minutes because the hour is getting late.
I know, but three hours to sit without using a restroom is a lot.
No, that's fine. I said just let's keep it to five minutes. Okay, do we have everybody back? Look, Rick.
I'm here.
Okay, I think we've got everybody back. Okay. Alright, so I guess the beginning is, is back to twelve oh five twenty, which is, uh. Ten seventy-five Clover Street, um, just a couple comments here. I would say there's a lot of material that Rick gave us in the last few days and was noted in the conversation by the various. Entity that we're speaking, yes.
Did we check to see if Ellen McCauley came in in those five minutes?
Uh, I think Rick checked, Rick, did you check again?
She's not, she's not back on.
Okay.
Alright, so let me continue please. Uh, the, um. So anyway, there's a lot of material here, so I, I don't know how the rest of the board members feel related to this. Um, again, to digest it all is significant as the volume of it was. So, uh, why don't we just go around and see, do, do we feel that, uh, this is a matter that we have. Have enough information and time to be able to deal with tonight, or what is the pleasure of the board members? So Andrea, why don't you start?
Andrew, yeah.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. She's, uh, I'm sorry, it's getting late here, excuse me, friends, but.
If I may, I would move to table it because there's a lot to consider.
Okay, can we just kind of get a little consensus on that, I think? Um, how about Kathleen?
That's fine.
Dennis, I, oh, did you say Kathleen or Janie?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate additional time. I want to go back, um, um, and read the Ted Myers material again.
Okay, okay. Alright, Janie?
Yeah, I, I think that that's, that's fair.
Okay, Judy?
Yes, I agree tabling.
Okay.
Which came in yesterday too.
Yes, I agree. Okay, Jen, let's go ahead.
I move that we.
Before we do, before we do that, um, now we have to talk about whether you guys want to keep the public hearing open.
Yeah.
Or do you just need to read the material you have, or do you want to give the applicant and the, um. Um, opposition chances to, um, rebut, um, and, and talk to us again?
I don't have a problem keeping it open.
Well, I, let me just interject here.
Yes, sure, go ahead, Ken.
Sure, I, I think Dennis, I heard you state after everyone made their comments that the public hearing is closed.
I did.
Yeah. We, we would have to have a motion to reopen the public.
That's correct.
Yeah, alright.
Yeah, and, and we've done that in the past.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying procedurally, if.
Yes, absolutely.
Somebody wants to make that motion.
Okay, so what, what, how about Andrea, what do you think?
Andrea can't talk.
Oh geez, huh, boy, oh boy. Boy, oh boy, I'm shooting blanks here. How about Kathleen?
I, I don't need more material. I want to go back and just double check, make sure that I read and recall what I remembered.
Hey Judy?
Yeah, I don't think we'd get anything new. We have enough to go over right now. We don't need to keep it open.
Okay. Okay. Well.
And you have, Ken, do you have an opinion on that?
Yes, Ken.
Yeah, I, I think that each, um, both the applicant and the opponents had a full opportunity to make the record. They've made the record that they wished us to have in front of us. Unless the board members have a specific question and, and if you did have a motion to reopen the public hearing. I would suggest that you make that a limited record that. We want, we would like to reopen the public hearing to hear more information about a specific topic.
Yes.
That would be the only way that I would suggest that you reopen this public hearing. Otherwise, I think the, the parties have all had an opportunity, the publics had an opportunity to make their comments.
Yeah, I, I agree. And generally, that's what we've done, has been something where the board required specific. Additional information from an applicant, then it certainly makes sense to keep it open, but. You know, I think, you know, we have, you know, debates among professionals here and, and, you know, which is obviously something that happens all the time. And then it's up to us to kind of sift through all of that and, uh, take a look at it, so I. And how about, how about you, Jen?
May I make a procedural question? Um, if we were to table it, keeping the public hearing closed. In the course of our review over the next month, if we had. Additional questions that we wanted to ask the applicant, could the public hearing be reopened at a future meeting or is that ship sailed?
The only problem you run into with that is that it will be advertised as tabled public hearing closed. Um, so. It doesn't meet the advertising requirements of a public hearing, so it's hard to reopen it without at least advertising that. That public hearing is still open for the general public to know that they have the right to speak.
Right, and, and I thought, I thought the question she was asking is if at the next meeting in June. After bringing up the project to discuss off the table, if an issue came up and the. Board decided they wanted more information, could we, at that point.
Right.
Make a motion to reopen the public hearing, give notice and then make, hold the decision again for yet another month. I think we'd run out of time under the code.
Understood.
Alright. Okay, so do we feel comfortable then? It sounds like the consensus is to keep the hearing closed and to move to tables.
Yeah, and let me just say, say one more thing. I mean, either side does have the right to submit additional information, which I will pass on to you.
Right.
Um, so just be aware that you could be getting additional stuff that. They won't have an opportunity to talk about, which I don't know if they need the opportunity to talk about it.
Well, can neighbors as well add, send in more information or not?
Any, anybody can send in communications to the board.
Okay.
Is there a deadline for that?
I'm sorry, say that again.
I asked if there was a deadline for submissions to the board.
I think we could put a deadline on that. That we will not.
Because twenty-four hours is, is rough when you're.
No, it's ridiculous. And I apologize for, for slamming you guys with all that, but, um, yeah, that, that's, um. I, I don't think that's fair to the board in any way, shape or form.
Um, and, and just to make, no. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ken.
Just to make it clear as I can procedurally. While, you know, Rick is absolutely right, anyone can send any communication they wish to the board at any time. You are closing the public hearing, you're closing the public hearing and later submissions would not be part of the public hearing record.
Okay, well, let's, uh, we got, we got to keep ourselves rolling here, guys, so what, uh. Is the general consensus to keep the public here? What I'm hearing is the general consensus is to keep the public hearing closed. Are we comfortable with that?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, alright, Jen, let's proceed, please.
I move that we table application twelve A dash O five dash twenty for consideration of materials submitted and testimony given. Do I have to say anything about the public hearing? Because it's already closed.
Already closed, right.
Okay.
Second.
Judy?
Okay, Judy.
Uh, motion is to table public hearing closed. Uh, Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Motion to table the public hearing closed, carries.
Okay, alright, now we got everybody back here. How about, uh, Kathleen? Uh, what are we thinking about five A O two? Which is, uh, the CCR ten, six tent events.
I do not have a problem with it.
Okay, does anyone have a problem with it? Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, I need to pull it up on my computer. Normally I print, so just one sec. Okay, I move to approve application five A O five two one based on the following findings of fact. One, the applicant is requesting a variance to allow for direction of a tent and hold up to six outdoor weddings and club special events for the year twenty twenty one. Two, granting of the permit will not negatively impact the health, safety or general wel- welfare of the community. The tent will be installed by a professional tent company and will only be for special events and weddings. Three, there will be no effect on available facilities from the increased population and attendance of the events as the request. Is for no more than six events per year and it is anticipated that the special events. Will last not more than one day and the tent will be up no longer than three days. There is also ample parking to accom- accommodate the event goers. Or granting of the request will not result in a change of character of the neighborhood or be detrimental to surrounding properties. As the location of the proposed tent is within the confines of the country grounds behind the clubhouse and not clearly visible from the road. Conditions, one, the application is granted as per the application submitted and testimony given for the remainder of twenty twenty one. Were up to six events per year. Two, all necessary fire marshal permits shall be obtained.
Okay.
Second.
Second, very good.
Rick, did you want to add any secret language to that?
Actually, Ken, um, tennis, I'm sorry, uh, special events do not require seeker, uh, to type two action, excuse me. So, I don't need, we don't need to do secret.
No, I just, I just want to make sure we have some record or something on the.
Yes, it is a type two. Um, action.
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate you looking up for me.
Motion is to approve with conditions, I'm sorry, who, Judy, you had the second on that?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson's right.
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
And Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries. Um, Dennis, before we go on to three, um, do we need to make some type of, uh, formal? I don't know, decision or, um, regarding five A O one?
Yeah, we should do that, Rick.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think so. I don't know, she, I received a text or like a message from her to over frustration, so. Um, yeah, I, I, I think we could just continue this till next month. Maybe some.
So, so you want to, uh, table, keep the public hearing open, table for representation?
Ed, would you be willing to make that motion?
Yeah, I move that we, um. Adjourn, um, the hearing with respect to application five A O one dash two one. Uh, that the public hearing is held open and that it, um. Be advertised as such for the next meeting.
Second, please.
I second it.
Judy, I'll share with you.
Go ahead.
The motion is to adjourn application five A O one twenty-one to the June meeting. Uh, Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn carries.
Okay, so now we're over to five A O three, which is Brookside Drive for the sunroom at the rear. Does anyone have any concerns about this? Okay, Judy.
I move we approve application five A oh three twenty-one based on the following findings of fact. One, the location for the proposed sunroom at the rear of the home is the only feasible one that will provide adequate space for the thirteen by fourteen square foot addition. The existing rear setback is fifty-six feet in lieu of the sixty-foot feet required by code. However, the requested fourteen-foot variance will not alter the character of the neighborhood. The immediate neighbor has a rear setback of thirty-seven point nine feet and a neighbor across the street has one less than the required sixty feet as well. This addition will hardly be visible to either abutting properties. It will not be visible from the road and there are no homes at the rear of the property. Three, all materials will match the existing home, creating a unified appearance. Four, and then conditions. One, this variance applies only to the thirteen by fourteen square foot room addition to the rear of the house as presented in testimony and written application. Two, all necessary building and planning approvals must be obtained.
Those unnecessary building permits?
Um.
Judy?
Building.
Just all this, yes, all necessary building permits shall be obtained.
Yes.
Second.
Second. Jennifer.
Jenny.
Jenny with the second.
Yes.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Ms. Dale? Did we move Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
And Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, the next is, uh, Council Rock Drive for the porch. Any concerns here? Okay, Andrea.
I move to approve application five A oh four dash twenty-one. All as described on the application and plans on file based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the granting of the requested front yard variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The proposed project largely recreates the front porch on the original home as constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. It is also consistent with multiple properties in the neighborhood that also have substantial front porches that extend into the required front yard setback. Number two, the requested variance is not substantial in light of the fact that the property as currently constructed already extends considerably into the front yard setback and the porch as proposed will only extend an additional six or so feet into the setback, representing only ten percent of the code specified minimum. Number three, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot reasonably be achieved by any other method or without variance. The porch as currently constructed requires replacement for safety purposes, which in all cases will require a variance and the applicant desires to return the home closer to its original construction with a more substantial front porch. Number four, there is no evidence that the proposed variance will have an adverse effect or, or impact on the physical or environmental condition, the neighborhood or district. Conditions, number one, the variance granted herein applies only to the addition described in and in the location as depicted on the application and in the testimony given. And number two, all necessary permits and architectural review board approvals must be obtained.
Got it. Good job.
I couldn't remember if A R B would be required for a porch.
Yep, in front of the house it is.
Anything in the front, right? Second.
Good.
Motion to, to, motions to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay, and then we've got the, uh, Country Club of Rochester. First for the tennis court and second for the accessory building.
But just before we start with that, Ken, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Um, seeker regulations state that tennis courts in residential districts do not are a type two action. Um, I'm not sure how to interpret that, um, if it takes in count, um, country clubs that are in residential districts. But it does say residential tennis courts are a type two action. Right. What it says is, uh, I just had it up here on my screen. Hold on one second. Type two action would include construction expansion or placement of minor accessory pertinent residential structures, including garages, carports, patios, decks, swimming pools, tennis courts. This is not a residential structure. This is obviously for the country clubs. I do not think this is a type two. I was also lucky. This is more than just a single lot line or, or, you know, very, um, area variance. So I, I think this is both for the height of the fence and the, um, allowing it in the, uh, in the yard uh, at different locations. I, I do think that we need, I think this is an unlisted. Um, and so we should, should make a neg deck here. If that's the, uh, intent of the board. Did, did we get an E A F? Yeah, there would be one with the application. I don't know if the board received one. Should be with the application. Okay, let me double check, hold on. There. It's on the screen. Oh, that helps.
I didn't have one in my documents.
Yeah, you didn't have one in your documents?
No.
Oh, you know what? You probably didn't have one in your documents, correct? I'm sorry. But there is.
Yeah, I don't, I didn't, I didn't.
Right. No, you probably don't.
I didn't see one, yeah.
Right.
What is the, uh, what is the E A F saying? I don't have a copy of it either. We pull it up. I guess we're gonna review it.
It's really small.
For some reason mine is, um, hold on.
Ah, there we go. Now I can read it.
Oh, there it is. Okay, wait a second.
I don't think it's gonna have any impacts, environmental impacts. Can you go download? Jeff?
Okay.
Can you just go back up to the top?
Yeah, can you just go back up to? I just wanted to see everything on the last page.
First page or the last?
Second page. It's replacing an existing ice rink, so.
Yeah, it's going over. There's no real grading or anything involved.
Exactly. Not a lot of site work.
Right.
Yeah.
Are we good?
I think so.
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, so is there any concerns other than the, the deck? Anyone have a concern about this? Oh, okay, let's proceed then.
Is there anything special I need to say?
Yeah, I'll, I'll say it for you.
Okay, I'll just read what I wrote and you can add to it.
I'll, I'll.
I want to do the neg deck first. Yes, thank you, Ed.
Do the neg deck. I'm gonna do the neg deck first and then just follow me, okay? The board having considered the information presented by the applicant and having completed the required review pursuant to seeker, the board determines that the proposed project would not likely have a significant environmental impact and has made the following decision.
Right. I move to approve application five A dash oh five dash twenty-one based on the following findings of fact. Number one, the proposed variance, variances will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, nor is it a substantial request. The proposed tennis courts are situated next to existing tennis course in the same location as an existing ice rink. The proposed location is eighty-three feet from the nearest property line and visually shielded from nearby properties by mature trees and shrubs. Number two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by any other method. The proposed tennis court placement was chosen due to the location of existing tennis courts, parking and pedestrian access. Number three, the sixteen-foot height of the fencing is the minimum needed for general safety to protect users from stray golf balls from the nearby golf course. The section of sixteen-foot high fencing will be only on the farthest side of the courts from the nearest property line with the northern section of ten feet, oh, sorry, with the northern section ten feet in height and the eastern and western sections just four feet in height. Number four, the health, safety and welfare of the community will not be adversely affected by the approval of this variance request. The project requires minimal grading and site work that will not impact the environmental conditions of the site. The proposed fencing will provide the necessary safety and protection from errant golf and tennis balls. Conditions, number one, this variance will apply only to the project as described in the application and testimony. In particular, it will not apply to projects considered in the future that are not in the present application. Number two, all necessary permits shall be obtained.
And can I also on that one, uh, Jennifer, add, um, all necessary, um, planning board approvals and um, building permits shall be obtained?
Sounds lovely.
Let's just say all necessary planning board approvals and permits.
Okay, so revised condition to all necessary planning board approvals and permits shall be obtained.
Second.
Okay.
Motion is to approve with conditions. Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Mr. Mites?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
And Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Motion to approve with conditions carries.
And then the final is the accessory building?
Yep.
Any can, any concerns here? Okay.
We have to read the negative declaration again.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read that again, just so, uh.
Okay, all right ahead.
Okay, the board having considered the information presented by the applicant and having completed the required review pursuant to seeker, the board determines that the proposed project would not likely have a significant environment impact and has made the following decision.
Uh, motion to approve application five A oh six twenty-one based on the following findings of fact. Number one, granting of the requested variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties as the proposed shed will be located approximately a hundred and eighty-five feet from the nearest property line and will be visually shielded by existing mature trees and shrubs as well as additional plantings being proposed along the existing access drive. An existing shed structure located closer to the neighboring properties will be removed as part of this project. Number two, the applicant is seeking the location of the shed due to the proximity to the clay tennis courts as the shed will house specialized equipment to maintain the courts and such equipment will be used frequently. Because the property is not a residential use and the primary structure is placed on the western end of the property, the location of the proposed shed is considered within the front yard and the shed is considered an accessory use, therefore a variance is required to provide relief. Number three, the benefits sought by the applica- applicant cannot be achieved by a feasible or alternative method than an area variance because the location of the shed is determined by the location of the clay tennis courts, which the applicant would like to locate adjacent to other existing tennis courts and platform tennis amenities and at the site of the existing paved ice rink which is being replaced. Number four, the proposed variance will not have an adverse effect or negative impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Rather, the applicant will remove an existing shed that is located closer to adjoining neighboring properties. So the placement of the replacement shed will be an improvement. Conditions, the existing shed shall be removed and the area variance approval is granted only for placement of the accessory structure at the location specified in the application. And number two, all necessary planning board approvals and all applicable building permits shall be obtained.
Second.
A second.
The motion is to approve with conditions. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Mike?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Primo?
Yes.
Ms. Tompkins, right?
Yes.
And Ms. Dale? And Ms. Dale?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to approve with conditions carries.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. DiStefano?
Um. Yeah, um. We have, Ken, I'm gonna, stop me if you don't think I should say anything, but, um, we have had a application submitted from, um, attorneys representing opposition to the Whole Foods project. Yeah, what, um, we're gonna talk about that, um, Rick, um, as to, I, I mean, you can certainly receive and file it as communications, but, um, we need to talk about um, when and how that's gonna be handled and noticed. Right, so.
Stay tuned. Yes?
Yeah, I think at this point in time, I, I mean, did you think we needed to decide something tonight, Rick, on? No, 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 no. I just wanted to kind of forewarn. Yeah. Yeah, so, so forewarning is that we may have a application in front of us regarding the issuance of a second building permit for the Whole Foods. So are similar to the one we had back in November, December.
So this is June, you mean?
I said for June.
It'll be for June, okay.
If, if, yeah, so we possibly will have one for June.
Yeah, okay. All right, is there anything else?
Uh, no, I do expect a heavy June meeting though.
Okay. All right.
Making all of our nights right now, Rick. Thanks.
What's that?
I said, you're just making all of our nights right now, Rick. Thanks.
Yeah, I just, you know, I just want to make sure I see all your smiling faces next week.
Okay.
That's all.
Make sure you enjoy all that reading on the, uh, on the first thing for the Baptist temple too, okay? All right. Thank you very much.
Night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.
Happy Monday. Thanks, bye.
Rick, did you say next month is gonna be heavy?
Yes.
I think so, yes.